Welcome, everyone. Would you please rise for the invocation and stay standing for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Father, we meet as a council in support of our community. We pray that you give us as leaders the guidance and courage to do what is right. Let courage fill our hearts that we may not disappoint those that look for leadership and direction to their concerns. Let us press toward the goal, being only concerned with what's best for our community. Amen.
I'm calling to order the City of Lee's Summit Regular Session Number 42 as amended. Can I get a roll call, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Hodges.
Here.
Councilmember DeMaro.
Here.
Councilmember Pryor, absent. Mayor Protim Lopez.
Here.
Councilmember Shields.
Here.
Councilmember Felker, absent. Councilmember Lovell.
Here.
Councilmember Edson.
Here.
Mayor Baird.
Councilmember Felker is on his way. And then Councilmember Pryor, if you could just, staff, keep an eye out on Zoom in case she does want to Zoom in, even though she's out of town. All right, thank you. The first item on the agenda is the motion to adopt the agenda. I have a motion by Councilmember DeMaro to adopt the agenda, seconded by Councilmember Shields. Discussion. Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in. No. Yeah. Seven oh right now. So that is adopted. Next is the approval of the consent agenda. I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda by Councilmember Edson, seconded by Councilmember Hodges. Discussion. Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in. Please record the vote. All right, it's unanimous. Thank you. Next, we have council roundtable. Items of general interest, things going on in your district. All right. I'll want to hear about vacations next month, then. It's the summertime. Then we'll go right into public hearings. We'll get right to business. The first item on, first public hearing tonight, we're going to close the regular session and open the public hearing in the matter of Reinhardt Food Service LLC and the land clearance for redevelopment authority plan. Reinhardt Food Service LLC is the applicant. Would all those wishing to speak to this matter, please rise and be sworn in by the city clerk.
Good evening, David Bushak, Chief Counsel of Economic Development and Planning. We'll have the developer present their presentation first, then I will speak second.
Thank you.
My name is Tammy Gardner. I'm the Corporate Vice President of Tax and Business Incentives for Performance Food Group. We are the parent company of the applicant Reinhardt Food Service. I'm also joined this evening by Scott Sinquanta, who's the president of our Lee's Summit facility. Tonight, is it night yet? Yes, I can see night. Tonight, we will cover our company history, a little bit about our proposed project, the requested economic development support, and the benefits and value proposition for the Performance Food Group, through its many subsidiaries, markets and distributes more than 250,000 food and food-related items to over 300,000 customers in the U.S. Our Lee's Summit location is owned by one of our subsidiaries, Reinhardt Food Service LLC. They are part of our food service segment. They offer a broad line of food service products, everything from mops to meats to plates, you name it. It's a one-stop shop for food service providers. Each of our distribution centers is run autonomously by a business team that understands the local market and the needs of its customers, and each of them is empowered to make decisions on how to best serve their customer base. Our broadline food service segment serves over 175,000 customers across the United States. Tonight, we're talking about our Lee's Summit facility, which is at capacity and has a need for more space to effectively continue to grow. The facility's been an employer and a taxpayer in the community since the early '90s. Reinhardt purchased the building in 2012, then our parent company, PFG, purchased Reinhardt in late 2019. And since that time, they've been working together to figure out a solution to be able to continue to grow our business and stay in Lee's Summit, whether that's expanding on our existing site or moving into a larger space. We're an active member of the community, part of Chamber of Commerce, supporting many chamber activities, and like all of our locations, we partner with, you know, a lot of the nonprofits locally to help with food donations and things of the like. Again, our current facility's at capacity, and a larger or expanded facility would allow us to increase our SKUs, to meet the growing demand of our existing customers, and then also to expand our footprint to additional regional and independent accounts. We service six states, including Missouri, but we're truly a very locally focused business. Most of our business is within a 50-mile radius of the facility, and more than 80% is within the greater Kansas City market. We've listed here some of our key suppliers, names of which you may recognize, Mission Foods, Zuregas, and Mr. Dells. And we've also listed a few of our local customers, some of which you may have been patrons of, Martin City Brewing, Minsky's Pizza, Sonic, Raising Cane's, and a few others. We are currently utilizing onsite temporary storage units because there are no outside storage options nearby, and we simply cannot continue to do business under the current conditions. So like I mentioned, we, as we see it, we have two options. We can expand on the existing unused portion of our lot, and I'll kind of point that out in a minute here, or we can seek a new site to support our planned growth. We would prefer to stay in the city for many reasons. Notably, where we are today, we have great highway access, and we have amazing associates that we'd really like to retain. Our proposed project would be an expansion on the unused portion of our land. You'll see the red dotted outline is the full site, and you can see the unused portion. So essentially, we would push the building out. Scott, is that north or south? I'm not sure either.
To the top of the slide.
Yeah, to the top of the slide. And just kind of square off the building, if you will, and then take it out further to the right, as you look at that photo. We have the existing building there today that you see is about 120,000 square feet, and we would like to expand to approximately 170, 180. We estimate this project will cost $22 million, if you can believe that. And we're hoping to commence work this summer, and the plan would be to be fully operational by spring 2025. Our current facility has 156 associates with an annual payroll of about $13 million. If we expand in place, we expect to retain all of our existing associates and create a minimum of 35 new jobs over five years. Scott has big plans for his business and thinks we're going to far exceed the 35. This, these, the green portions you see here, the green areas, this depicts where we would expand, kind of another view of that. So we would expand in those green areas, and additionally, we would add a new employee entrance and a break room on that southeast corner, so that must have been the north. And then, of course, address any needed building and site repairs on the existing facility. We did have a BLITE study conducted, and that was presented to the LCRA board on May 24th. They approved our project, agreed with our analysis. There was one modification they made to our ask, and that was, their preference was to have no personal property tax abatement and to increase the percentage of real property tax abatement to compensate, so that the incentive in total would be approximately the same. And we were fine with that. So tonight's presentation, and what David will go over in more detail, has been adjusted according to those recommendations. That our facility is represented by the yellow star. You'll note that the entire area to the north of us, within the black bold lines there, has already been previously designated as BLITED and is currently within the LCRA boundary. So we are literally just outside of it. So the way it works for our company is each year, our board sets aside, if you will, budgets for a fixed amount of money to spend on capital projects. And every one of our 100 and, almost 150 facilities, I think it is, all compete for that, right? Everybody wants to expand, everyone wants a new shiny building, whatever the case may be. So to increase the IRR for this project, and therefore, the competitive position for capital internally, our request was for a 40 percent, oh, sorry, a sales tax exemption on construction materials, and that was estimated at 40% of building cost. The total sales tax exemption, we estimate, would be roughly $444,000, as well as an 84%. I know that's kind of quirky, but that was just the math to make the numbers work to, when we took off the personal property piece. So an 84% real property tax abatement for 10 years, the net present value of which is just over 1.1 million. This total support request is approximately 7.4% of our projected investment, and is just where we need to be to get our IRR to where we think internally we'll get the thumbs up to move forward. And just to note, I mean, I know you guys hear it all the time, we all are experiencing it, but we are seeing really, you know, still seeing high construction costs, and our borrowing costs have definitely increased. So incentives like this are, you know, more meaningful today, I feel like, than they have even been in the past. This slide lists some of the more recent abatement packages that have been approved. Our project is most similar in size to one of our vendors, Zurega Pasta, the second one listed there. There were 160,000 square feet, we're just a bit over that, and we're asking for 10 years. And originally, our ask was for 75% for real and personal, but now we've taken off the personal and adjusted the real accordingly, as we discussed. We feel like this project supports many of the targeted outcomes for the city. Manufacturing and distribution is a targeted industry. The city focuses and, you know, feels like it's important to retain their existing economic base, which would happen if we were able to expand in place as opposed to move. We create a safe working environment for our associates and provide quality jobs. We are very, very big on promoting from within, and there is advancement opportunities for our associates at all levels. The average wage for our current employees is 35 an hour, and we think that this project promotes an environment that, approving this project will promote an environment encouraging growth and sustaining the economic, existing economic tax base. Over, this kind of goes over the, what this project would pay in. So over the term of the, of the abatement, which is 10 years, with the increased real property tax abatement and no personal property tax abatement, we would pay an additional $320,000 in real property taxes, 48,000 of which would go to the city. And then, again, all of our personal property taxes. So over 10 years, we would pay just over half a million dollars more in real and personal property taxes. And the total property taxes paid over the entire term would be almost $2.6 million. And this just kind of breaks that out, what portion is the city versus all the jurisdictions. We also expect to spend roughly $2.4 million on personal property, and that will generate another $220,000 in revenue over the 10 years, above and beyond what is paid today in the existing facility. 40,000 of that would go to the city. We also will be paying sales tax on all of our personal property tax purchases that are necessary to, you know, outfit the interior of the building. And we estimate that'll be about $153,000. So net-net today versus if we didn't do the project versus if we did, there is a net-net gain, obviously, in sales taxes and personal real property taxes to all jurisdictions. Again, we expect to create a minimum of 35 jobs, and according to the Economic Policy Institute, creating, spending the money on our project will create additional 100 direct construction jobs and 200 indirect jobs. And the new jobs that we will create will also create other indirect jobs for suppliers and vendors. Additional payroll, they estimate 85 to 97 other indirect jobs will be created as a result of this, and that will generate 7 to 9 million dollars in additional payroll and funneling of money into the local communities. The fact of the matter is, we feel like a project like ours is, it's good for us, it's good for the local economy, it's a win-win, and we look forward to getting your feedback and answering any questions when David's done with his presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I will start my presentation, as we usually do, taking a look at the developer's requests and comparing it what, to what the request was at the conceptual presentation. So we begin our, actually, I'll start with entering into the record Exhibits 1 through 10 that are contained in the meeting packet. I didn't even interrupt you. I knew you'd come through. Please enter into the record Exhibits 1 through 10.
All right, so the developer's request, at the conceptual presentation, their request was for a sales and use tax exemption on construction materials, that remains the same. And then their real property and personal property tax abatement requests were both at 75% for 10 years. Real property tax abatement is, are the taxes on the land and the improvements that are constructed on the property, and then the personal property taxes would be machinery and equipment. At the May 24th LCRA board meeting, I mentioned to you two weeks ago, when we had our presentation and the public hearing on the other plan, that, the other LCRA plan that went to the board, there was extensive discussion on that plan. Same applies to this plan, there was extensive discussion by the LCRA board, and one of their recommendations was to eliminate the personal property tax abatement request and adjust the real property tax abatement request, so it's the same economic benefit to the company. The company agreed to do that, so the plan as presented to you today is different than when you heard the conceptual presentation, and so this is what the numbers essentially say in the plan today. The real property tax abatement today is at 84%, no personal property tax abatement, which means they'll be paying sales taxes when they purchase the machinery and equipment, they'll be paying personal property taxes as normal on the machinery and equipment. I'll show you what that means in terms of dollars for the taxing districts in a moment, but I wanted to make clear that the plan as presented to you has been amended by the company as recommended by the LCRA board, and that's what you'll be considering tonight. Then we take a look at the property tax benefit to the taxing districts. These are the taxes that are being produced by the property today. The first year, taxes and pilots, if the plan is approved, the taxes increase to this amount, about $239,000. In over 10 years, the taxes and pilots are about $2.3 million. I included the personal property tax analysis here, just as a point of comparison, even though that is, that is not an abatement request, this shows the benefit that flows through to the taxing districts like normal. So the taxing districts will receive all of the personal property taxes that it normally would, even if you don't approve this plan. Then the value of the incentive request to the developer, and this is where we look at our benchmark comparison to other incentive projects that the council's approved, total project cost of about $22 million. The benefit of the real property tax abatement, the net present value calculation is about 5%. And you can see the comparison to when the conceptual presentation was made, just, just as a point of comparison. Then the value of the sales tax exemption request at about 2% of total project cost. So the total value to the company is about 7% of total project cost. It's down slightly from the conceptual presentation because that 84% tax abatement is, I think it's in the range of like $50,000 left, less over a 10-year period. So roughly the same as when you heard the conceptual presentation. And then the bottom part of this slide, impact of the abated taxes to the city, the sales and use tax and the real property tax abatement impact, and then the benefit flowing to just the city from those real property taxes, personal property taxes, and sales tax revenues, the result from those personal property purchases, based on the assumption the developers provided us. The next slide, this is our one-page simple summary, so everybody's clear on exactly what the request is, both through the LCRA, the sales tax exemption at 100% and the benefit to the company, and the real property tax abatement now at 84%, and the amended plan benefit to the company, the same numbers that I just showed you on, on the last slide. But this is the one-page simple summary, so you understand precisely what you're considering. This is the slide that you've seen on many occasions in the past. This is a listing of major incentivized industrial projects on the Missouri side of the Kansas City region, and as we've discussed in the past, you see that Lee's Summit has now been added to this chart. This project is most like the Zurega Pasta incentive that the city council has previously approved. And the Zurega Pasta approval was 75% for 10 years. They didn't have that mixed real and personal property tax request, so that's why the numbers are a little bit different in this case. But as, as, as we've talked about in the past, this incentive request is substantially less than most of the incentive packages that Lee's Summit and our comparative cities have approved for large-scale industrial projects in the past. This is the table, then, that you've seen also in previous occasions. This is a listing of all the LCRA redevelopment plans that the city council has approved or recently considered. So we've got the Colburn Ridge project that actually you have, have approved as of the last council meeting. At the time I prepared this, these were both under consideration. And then you see where Performance Food Group fits in here. Looking at the primary characteristics, purely industrial land use as compared to some of the other plans, similar incentives that have been approved many times by the city council, it's a blighted area, redevelopment scenario, redevelopment slash expansion, and there's no other incentives requested with this project, it's purely this LCRA plan that you're considering tonight. The last thing that I will cover, then, are the findings associated with approval of the LCRA plan. The first finding is BLITE, and this was actually discussed, I think, a good amount at the conceptual presentation. There's a BLITE study that's included in the meeting packet that was discussed at the LCRA board meeting. And one thing that I will note is that there is clear Missouri case law authority supporting the idea that economic underutilization is a valid basis for a BLITE finding, which is one of the components of the BLITE study that's been presented to you. Second finding is necessity. City council must find that the redevelopment of the redevelopment area is necessary and in the interest of the public health, safety, morals, and welfare of the residents of the city. And you've heard the developer's testimony regarding their competition for financing among their multiple facilities, and why the incentive request is, the incentive is necessary for them to bring those resources to this project. And then finally, conformance with the comprehensive plan, this is obviously not an issue in this case, it's an existing use, and it's just an expansion, expansion of that use. And then I'll finish with the map here, as we've talked about. This property is just right down here, right outside the blighted area and the urban renewal area that was created by the city council back in 2014. So this would be an expansion of the urban renewal area to include this parcel, which is right outside the existing area. And I will stop there and be happy to answer questions or listen to discussion.
Okay, thank you, sir. Questions for applicant or staff? Councilmember Shields.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple of questions. First are just kind of clarifications that, I think this was pretty well covered, but just for my own clarification, the tax abatement is only on the new construction, so they're going to keep paying the same taxes on the existing facility and like split that parcel and just get the abatement on the, the new section?
Yes, that's right.
And then, is this a, like a floating pilot? So like if the county increases the assessed value of the land, will it be 84% of whatever the, that increased assessment is, or is it a fixed?
It's actually not. And so this is, this is going to be a little tricky to describe, but after the facility and the expansion is constructed, the county will value the property in its new state, and that increased value will be the, the component that the 84% abatement is applied to. And, and this is, I think, the part that gets to your question, as the county increases that value on a biannual basis, the 84% abatement is locked in at the increased value of the first year, which is unique. That's how they presented this plan to the city. So the taxes that will flow through the taxing districts are the base on that first year, and any increase that the, that the county assigns to the value of the property going forward, and the 84% abatement only applies to the increased value as of year one, running through 10 years.
That's very good to know, thank you. And then, I was just curious, at the LCRA board, why did they want to pivot from personal to real property abatement?
I, I think it was this simple. They asked the question, has, has this LCRA board or the city council through the LCRA ever approved personal property tax abatement in the past? The answer is no. And they said, well, let's, let's stay with that. Let's not add that to the list of incentives that we provide. And then they asked, has the city done that in other cases? And the answer is yes, in a few cases through Chapter 100. But I think the simple answer to your question is, they didn't want this to set the precedent for doing that, if the same economic advantage can be accomplished through a different means. And I will say, I don't know if this, they were thinking of this, but from an implementation standpoint, it's actually easier for city staff and for the company, because if you were to include the personal property tax abatement, then the city would have to take title to all the machinery and equipment that they purchased. Bill of sale has to be in the name of the city. It's actually a good amount of additional paperwork, and this is a much simpler way of achieving the same result.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you so much. I think those are all my questions, Mayor.
Thank you. Other questions? Yes, Councilmember Felker.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Bushak, I only have one question about the, the slide with the comparisons, and I know, and I couldn't see it because I was looking at it on my device, so I couldn't tell if we'd updated it to have...
This first one?
No, I'm sorry. Keep going to the regi, that's this one, which, and I'm sorry, I did not review it in advance. I was just curious, we had a conversation about seeing if we were going to update that to see if we had other post-2020, other municipalities that might be on this list, and I'm just curious if we've had any further research or review on that.
I, I'll, I'll confess, I've done a lot of homework in this category, and there's some other charts that I would love to show you, but not necessary at the moment, have not updated this chart as a comparison to other cities. But I've done a lot of homework for Lee's Summit and our, our incentives historically.
Now, that, that actually was, I, I know we talked about it several, maybe a month or two ago, maybe even in this presentation, the conceptual as being something that would be nice to have updated.
Yeah, I agree, that's something we should look into and add to the chart.
I know you're not twiddling your thumbs. Thanks. Thank you, Mayor.
I can have staff look on it, too, I'll write down. Other questions for staff or applicant? Sorry, I'm writing my notes down here. Okay. Okay, is there anyone who wishes, we've seen this presentation before, and you have tweaked it. We've seen this presentation before, and you have tweaked it. The, with the personal property, at least the LCRA commission did. But it's pretty similar to the last one. We didn't go into the detail on the development plans, you know, the changes in the building, but it was squared off, and it was, and they still had room to expand later if they need to, I think. So at this point, I'm going to ask if there's anyone that wishes to speak in favor or in opposition to the application. Please come forward. All right. Any additional questions from council? All right. Does the applicant care to make any further comments? Thank you. Hearing no further testimony, I'm closing the public hearing and reopening the regular session. Is there any council discussion on this application? Councilmember Edson?
Yeah, I'm really happy to be able to approve this, because this is what our incentives should be used for, is getting good quality jobs here and helping a local business that's grown here and chooses to stay here. So I'm really happy that, I hope we approve this. Thank you.
$35 an hour is pretty good. Times 20s, I just so you know, I did the calculation, times 2080, $72,000 a year, times 35 jobs is a payroll of 2. almost 6 million that they're going to add on. That's pretty good. Councilmember Lovell?
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, just a couple of things. I agree with Councilmember Edson that a good use of the incentives, I specifically like that we're still collecting on the current portion of that, so the retention of jobs. I also think it was, I think it was a great idea from LCRA to take that out of the personal property tax bucket. It's much easier to manage and follow. So I just, I think this is, as was said by the applicant, a win-win. So, thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Mayor, for Tim Lopez?
Thanks, Mayor. Just along the same lines as my colleagues, those comments they've already made. Definitely appreciate the applicant wanting to continue to invest in this community. At the end of the day, I mean, we talk a lot about business attraction and economic development, bringing new jobs, new industries, new investment. As Councilmember Edson already stated, this is an existing, an existing investor that has been very committed to this community. And that's why we bet these out, and that's why I think this is, we need to continue to do this. It's not just new jobs and new investment, it's existing investors that care about this community that have invested here. So I'm happy to support this as well. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Demoral?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for staying in Lee Summit and making your redevelopment plans here in Lee Summit. I am glad that you are bringing some more jobs also. That's an added bonus, so thank you.
Thank you. Okay, then I'm going to go ahead and move us to the next step, which is, Councilmember Edson, would you please read Bill number 23-129?
Thank you, Mayor. Move to advanced to second reading, Bill number 23-129, in ordinance approving the Reinhardt Food Service LLC land clearance for redevelopment authority redevelopment plan.
Thank you. I have a motion to move to second reading, Bill number 23-129, by Councilmember Edson, seconded by Councilmember Hodges. Seeing none, please cast your vote. Oh, do you, what's your vote? Could you put Captain, I almost called you Captain?
Captain Felker.
Captain Felker, as an I. That would be, all votes are in, please record the vote. Eight in favor and zero against, so I agree. Thank you for continuing to invest and expand in Lee Summit. All right. Is it? That is so cool. Okay, do you need her to get you on? No, you're good. Okay. I'm going to go to the next one, which is another public hearing. I'm going to close the regular session and open the public hearing in the matter of the preliminary development plan for Dental Depot, 1501 Northeast Rice Road, Ashmore Investments LLC is the applicant. Would all those wishing to speak to this matter please rise and be sworn in by the city clerk? Scott, we need you at the front.
Which one is it? I think it, I think it closed.
City council, thank you for having me be here. My name is Phil Fitzgerald. I'm the architect for Dental Depot. Also attending here is our civil engineer, Josh Lipscomb, with Wallace Engineering, and our owners representative, Brian Ward. We have recently just finished approval from the planning commission, and so our project is about a 6,000-square-foot dental clinic on a little over 1.3 acres of land. It'll be a 14-operatory clinic with a future addition for four operatories. The building on 1501 Rice Road is a vacant piece of property and is a very difficult piece of property to develop. It's kind of sitting up on a hill, but also touches the flood plain. So we've had a real challenge to get this sited in here and use that property. We butt up to the east to residential, and we butt up to the north to commercial, and our property is properly zoned. The property to the east of us is a line of trees that it's in really bad condition. We had our meeting with the homeowners association, and we met with homeowners behind us, and we've actually, the owners gone out and taken some trees out that were falling onto their property and also some dangerous spiky trees that, that have children. We've met with the owners to the north, and they've attended our meeting and are very happy that we're going to be here. The building itself, architecturally, is a turn-of-the-century train station that, and is pretty accurate on some historical data. There's also a train that is very realistic and a scaled model of an actual steam-engine train. We've got a semaphore, and we've also got a water tower, and our signage, the character of the signage is such that it's very informational, similar to a depot. So the building is made of hardy plank and a very high-quality project. The, we have 49 parking spaces, and I know that code only requires, I think about 30, but this will be a very busy clinic, and with all the dentists and hygienists and all the assistants, along with the people coming in, this is appropriate for us. We have also a generator, so if there is a power loss, that we're still operating. Here you can see that it's a very challenging site. There's, I think, about 29 or 30-foot of fall across the back of the property, and we were able to get an entrance that meets accessibility standards for ADA and actually get into our building, and so it's worked out quite well. This kind of shows the line of the property and the angle and the line of the buildings next to us, and it kind of shows how the building will fit on the site for a section. This, again, is a building at elevation that kind of shows where our water tower is, our building tower, and building in relation to the property. So we have a pretty large retaining wall on the front of the property that will have a large fence for safety and security, so nobody can go off the wall. So some rendered elevations. Again, this is kind of showing that the signs that we're requesting and were approved for planning. And so that's a quick presentation. I'd like to introduce now Mr. Brian Ward from Dental Depot. He might say a few words about the project.
Good evening. Thank you very much. Brian Ward with Dental Depot. Just wanted to give you guys just a brief history of us, what brought us to Lee Summit, and some of our other projects that, you know, we've done in the past. But, so Dental Depot is based out of Oklahoma City. We have 35 locations currently, three more under development right now, hoping that this is our fourth one. Trying to get this going late this summer, if at all possible, to be completed prior to summer of next year, of '24. We, as I said, based in Oklahoma, have offices in Oklahoma City, Tulsa, Phoenix, the DFW area, and then Kansas City. We've got location, one location in Blue Springs and one in Independence as well. And excited about getting into Lee Summit. You know, a little bit about how we choose where we're going to open locations is generally based on where we have doctors that have a desire to go. So what brought us to the Kansas City market was Dr. Patel in Blue Springs. He's originally from this area, went to high school there, went to school here, but came and worked for us for a while, and was excited to get back to this market. So that's what prompted us to come into Kansas City. And Dr. Patel's a very active participant in everything we have going on in the market. Also, in conjunction with that, for this Lee Summit location, I think our ultimate goal is we've got a Dr. Cole Prestojevich, I hope I didn't butcher his name. His father is an oral surgeon, actually, here in Lee Summit, right across the highway. And we're hoping to use Dr. Cole here at this location, who has roots in the community, wishes to be here, and we're excited to get him here. As Phil said, it's about a 6,000-square-foot location. You know, we have a pretty good-sized building, pretty good-sized parking area, but our practice is a little different than your typical dental practice. With all of our support and large support team that we have based regionally in different markets and out of Oklahoma City, we're able to really ramp our practices up and make them, I guess I'm looking for the best term, but very busy compared to your average dental practice, thus necessitating the size and, you know, volume of space needed. Starting out in a practice of this size, we would start with one doctor and approximately 10 to 12 staff. Kind of depends a little bit on some outlying factors of whether or not we do orthodontics or not, with the goal of growing this to two to three doctors with the expansion in due time, and ultimately probably, you know, 35 to 38 potential staff. Not all there simultaneously, but a staff of that size. And I think that's about it I've got at the moment. Any questions? Yes.
So we'd all entertain any questions you may have. I know staff will be up next for...
Yeah, we'll do the staff's presentation, and then we'll come back for questions. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. Shannon McGuire, staff planner. Please enter into the record Exhibit A, listed exhibits 1 through 18.
Please enter into the record 1 through 18.
All right, so there is no new information from the planning commission, or since the planning commission, and the applicant did a fairly good job of covering everything, so I'll try not to be too duplicative in my presentation here. So the site is located there on the northeast corner of Rice Road and northeast Mulberry Street. You can see to the north is on CP2. East is R1. South, the park is R1, and then CP2 to the south as well, with 291 to the west. They are proposing the preliminary development plan. Overall, the site is about 1.32 acres, building slightly over 6,000 square feet. They are proposing 49 total parking spaces, and 31 of those are required. Total building height is that 37 feet. The water tower that they are proposing down here in the southwest corner is 21 feet six inches. The property does have two road frontages, but they are only gaining access on the one northeast Rice, one point of access here. Overall, the building materials to be used will include brick, cementitious fiberboard, fiberglass roof, as well as some natural cedar wood posts throughout. There's some more elevations there. Some of the example photos that you've already seen. I do want to hit on, there's a couple modifications that they have requested. The first modification is for the fence that's typically required in a high-impact buffer screen. They are proposing to eliminate that fence along the eastern property line there. In addition to, they're proposing to preserve as many trees as they can up in this northeast corner, as well as plant additional ornamental and evergreen trees, as long with some shrubs. The subject site does rise about 30 feet from the south to the north. If a fence were to be installed, per UDO requirements, it'd be right about here where this red line is. And as you can see, the homes to the east there do sit somewhat higher. This property is up 6 to 10 feet. This one's 8 to 12. This one's about 6 to 8 above where that fence would sit. So being such a significant elevation change, installing a 6-foot fence is really ineffective at the, where it would be required. Again, you can see the, kind of that grade change. So this is the east-west, or west-east cross slope. If you're standing down here, looking kind of to the north, you can see the house here, how much higher it sits. So a 6-foot fence here, maybe more over to here, would be pretty ineffective than the same. This is if you were standing on the Rice Road looking. Second, they are proposing the use of a conditional material, and that's going to be the cedar. Typically, wood is only allowed by council approval. They are going to use it on the proposed water tower, as well as some accent pieces throughout the building, and as posts here for this kind of shaded area. In reviewing the project, the applicant has submitted a maintenance plan. They will revisit the property as needed, or at minimum to every two years. They will inspect all the exterior facade and repair any repairs that need to be undertaken at that time. Some of those could include some power washing, stripping of old stain and restaining, remedying any kind of organic growth on that wood, as well as, like I said, restaining. So the applicant has committed to maintaining the property in good condition, and staff does support the proposed conditional material. They are also proposing a sign package that's above the UDO standard. UDO typically would require, or would allow three signs, three wall signs by right. They have proposed a total of eight wall signs and a monument sign. During the planning commission, staff's original recommendation was to reduce that to five. Planning commission did have a lengthy discussion on that and has recommended to, for approval of the sign package as presented by the applicant. Here's just kind of layout of where all those signs will be located on the site. The proposed project is consistent with the land use designation from the comp plan. It does designate the property as commercial. The CP2 district is existing, so the proposed use is a use that is allowed by right in that district. It is consistent with, incompatible with the abutting offices to the north, and is a less or intense commercial use than what would be allowed by some other commercial uses that could go in there. So with that, staff does have five conditions of approval as listed out here. The first one's going to be the modification to the fence to allow them to eliminate that. The second modification is to allow the eight wall signs as presented. The third condition is to allow that wood sighting. The fourth condition's going to be, requires them to develop the property as they've submitted in their plans. And then the fifth condition really speaks to no signage or lights on that wall sign, or that, sorry. No signage shall be located on the water tower. The reason for that is that that would fall under a whole different classification of the type of sign. That'd be a monument sign, it'd be way too big, and really wouldn't work out per UDO code there. So with that, I can complete my presentation, and I can answer any questions you may have at this time.
All right, thank you. All right, thank you. All right, questions for staff or applicant? Councilmember Edson.
Thank you. Uh, Sheena, I'm, I'm gonna go back to the fence. So I totally understand it really doesn't make sense to have, uh, require the fence because of the elevation of the houses behind them, but what sense does it make to do the vegetation?
It will, the vegetation will provide additional screening. Um, the vegetation will get over the, so the fence is only six feet tall. Um, the vegetation will grow much taller than that and will provide additional screening. So if you were in the house, the house is gonna, at this picture here, um, this would be the house. That vegetation would get up here and help screen some additional, uh, that roofline.
Could you show me the, the graphic of where the trees are gonna go? How that's gonna work out?
Trees will be right along here. So this, this right here is a retaining wall. And the trees will be along that, top of that retaining wall with the property line back here.
Okay.
So those houses are kind of off-screen.
Okay.
Over here.
That's all I wanted to know. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Questions? Councilmembers? Councilmember Hodges?
So I just had a question in regards to the water tower. I guess what it, I, I don't understand, what is the point of it? And, cause I, I drove by the one in Blue Springs. Correct me if I'm wrong. I was just there yesterday driving by and I took notice of the building, cause I knew you guys were coming. Um, but I don't, I don't think I noticed one unless it's hidden in the back somewhere. But I didn't notice that they had one in their location.
Not allowed based on that site.
Okay.
To put one based on its proximity to the road, um, and just visibility. It's a lighted intersection right there. The only place it could have gone would have potentially been, uh, you know, impede sightlines for drivers, and so we were not allowed to put one there. Uh, the purpose of it is to, is kind of a period piece to go with the train station. Look, original, you know, train stations from the turn of the century used a water tower of that style, um, to refill the steam engines, and so we use that. So of our 35 locations, I think 30 or 31 have water towers. Um, and, uh, the, actually none of them here in Kansas City, unfortunately, we've not been able to get one approved. But, um, but it's, uh, in Oklahoma City, Dallas, Tulsa, Phoenix. So we've got them in multiple markets, multiple, you know, areas and, so.
Okay, thank you. I was just curious. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Felker.
And, and is it functional? That's the question I have. What, does it serve an actual utilitarian?
No, it is not functional. It is purely...
Just ornamental?
Ornamental.
Don't, you don't store, store supplies out there or, uh? No give, yeah, I'm not, I'm not gonna give you any ideas.
Well, we don't, our owner doesn't need anymore, but, uh, but no, it is purely ornamental, uh, for aesthetics, uh, just to go with the style theme.
You mentioned own, owner, so ownership is based in Oklahoma, uh?
Oklahoma City and a partnership here.
Okay, so there is some local ownership that's incorporated into that?
Yeah, and in our newer developments that we've been doing as of late, we are strongly encouraging our doctors that exist at that location to be a partner.
Be a part of the owner. I think that's always, that's a good...
It's a fantastic tool for us for retention and keeping people kind of centered in, uh, especially in their communities. It allows them to feel like they, you know, own something in the part of that community.
And, and I'll just say this, um, when you have a, th- this is a corporate dental model, but if you have that local buy-in, that I think makes a difference. When you have others, we all know there are other ways that this is done.
Right.
And, um, anyway, this, I, I like the idea that there are local owners who are part of the ownership. I think that's...
100%, and not to correct you, cause you are technically correct in the corporate ownership side of it, but we view it very much as a family and doctor-owned business. Um, Dental Depot is owned by one family and the partner doctors in, you know, our locations. Uh, so it's one individual. It's not, you know, some private equity firm out of New York City that is the primary controller of it. It's, you know, the, the primary family that owns it plus the partner in that location. And it's, it's worked well for us thus far.
And, and forgive me, cause that's not really the topic that we're addressing. I really, I know that's not germane to reviewing this, but I appreciate you dialoguing with us about it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Other questions? Um, I only have a couple, um, for the applicant. Can you go to your, like, second slide? The one with the, kind of the conception, the rendered, um... Oh, is that, maybe that's the...
It's maybe staff's stuff, so I'm not... Are you asking for staff's slides or applicant's slides?
I wondered, um, this is applicant's presentation, maybe, maybe it's slide three. It's the top-down view. I think it's right after that one. Yeah, it's the site plan.
I'm gonna step out of the way.
Yeah, that. Can you zoom in there? So you've got the covered area there?
Yes, sir.
And it says on there, future addition. Are you not putting that in right away or?
We will not put that in right away. Um, just to somewhat control costs in the beginning. Uh, we don't outfit it completely, um, but we go ahead and prepare the building for the future expansion. It's substantially cheaper if we do this roof lines and tresses and all that stuff, um, now as opposed to coming back after the fact. Um, and we'll, you know, add those additional chairs as capacity is needed.
And then what's that area, is that area for staff or is that for, um, your clients?
For that expansion.
That con, that, uh, covered...
It'll be a covered patio. It'll be for staff or just break or, you know, we'll probably put a picnic table or, um, but a place for them to go outside and take a break, have lunch.
Okay, and then your, your tower in this drawing is, uh, it's on the corner there above the office. Is that correct?
Yes.
Can you point to it so everybody can?
Well, on the, the actual tower construction on the building?
The tower, yeah, the tower is on that front corner. No, not the water tower, the...
It's right here. It's above the main entrance, right here.
Let me look.
Make sure I'm saying that right.
Looked over your plans. I don't...
Hold on. No, you're correct. It is down, sorry, my bad. I'm getting this floor plan confused with another one that we have in another city. That tower is right here in this, right above this opertory.
Right there.
Yep.
Okay.
My apologies.
Okay, I just wanna make sure, because I was trying to figure out from that picture where that tower was, based on your other drawings. Okay. It just seemed bigger than that, but it's so hard from these.
That room, that specific opertory is slightly oversized to accommodate the footprint of that tower.
Okay, I got you. Yeah, I can see that now. Okay, that makes sense. And then it doesn't matter which way the train's going, cause I noticed on your drawings, the, or on your photos, the train faced away from the deep, the building and now it's facing towards it. There's no rhyme or...
Sometimes it'll, it may depend on, as with all things, when you look at it two-dimensionally. It's kind of like, uh, it makes sense like this, but, um, because it is, you know, something that kids can play on or, you know, have been known to, uh, we may get there on site and direct it the other direction based on, you know, again, it's so hard to judge two-dimensionally, but when you get there, when it, based on safety or something, you may go, no, we want to actually face it the other direction.
Makes sense, especially when you gotta, uh, change in elevation like you have on this lot.
Correct.
Okay, uh, Councilmember Felker?
Thank you, Mayor. A follow-up question. So, um, Mr. Ward, there, the, uh, our economics, you know, Community Economic Development Committee has been working on our incentive plan. And one of the things we're revising, which is probably not part of what you had to look at in terms of your application, was we were going to ask applicants for PDPs, if I remember correctly, to actually share if they were gonna be also seeking any other incentives post this. So, uh, I hope you don't mind me asking that. That may not be something you're prepared to speak about, but...
Not necessarily, but I believe the answer's gonna be no. We're not gonna seek any incentives.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. All right, uh, is there anyone that wishes to speak in favor or in opposition to the application? Please come forward. Good. Are there any additional questions from council? Does the applicant care to make any further comment? No? All right, thank you. Hearing no further testimony, I'm closing the public hearing and reopening the regular session. Is there any council discussion on this application? Councilmember Shields?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I just wanna say I think this looks great. I think especially in that area, it could really use some, um, infusion of fresh, uh, buildings, ideas. I think it's gonna be a great addition to the city, so, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Shield, uh, Councilmember Edson?
Yes, I would agree with everything Councilmember Shield said. I do think we need to require the water tower to look like a Lee Summit water tower.
Oh, my. That'd be a challenge.
But, no, I just wanted to throw that out there. Um, no, I'm in favor of this application. And I'm in favor of, um, letting them have the signs they want. Yeah, so, thank you.
Thank you. Any other council discussion? We're not used to seeing the, the, what'd you call it when you started off? The, the decor, the architectural, old-school...
Turn of the century train station?
Turn of the century. There we go. I like that. The turn of the century, yeah. Except around downtown. Have you seen our downtown out here? It's pretty, pretty cool out here. Um, we're not used to seeing it expand, expanding. I'm, I'm shocked you're not trying to put this downtown somewhere. But, uh, no, it looks, it looks great and then that's a tough lot to develop, so thank you for that. It's just, it's like the second time I've said that in the last month. It seems weird that we've had a couple, uh, couple of applications like this that are developing locations that have really long been, um, tough to, to take on. And so we're, this is exciting. So thank you. All right, seeing no further questions, comments, uh, I will ask Councilmember Demora, would you please read Bill number 23-130?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move to advance to second reading, Bill number 23-130. An ordinance approving a preliminary development plan for Dental Depot on land located at 1501 Northeast Rice Road, all in accordance with provisions of Chapter 33, the Unified Development Ordinance of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Lee Summit, Missouri.
Thank you. We have a motion to advance the second reading, Bill number 23-130 by Councilmember Demora, seconded by Councilmember Shields. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in. Please record the vote. It does move to second reading unanimously. Thank you for investing in Lee Summit.
Thank you so much. Thank you very much.
All right, we are at the public comments portion of the meeting. Ms. Lombardo, do we have any, uh, public comment?
Mayor, we did not have any public comments turned in previous to tonight's meeting.
Yep.
And I have not had any cards turned in this evening.
Thank you. That takes us to presentations. Uh, we are gonna have a presentation on Stormwater Advisory Committee discussions and recommendations to council. Mr. Binger is headed this way.
Okay, good evening. I'm George Binger. I'm city engineer and with me tonight is Anna White, who is the, uh, project manager from Blacken Beach, who has, uh, been working with the city on this study. Um, if you...
Doesn't like you.
Apparently not.
He liked all the other people that were up here tonight.
I, it must be the, it doesn't like technical people, I guess. So, um, as you'll recall, we've been working on the stormwater, uh, utility concept, uh, user charge fee with Public Works Committee and City Council. And we had a presentation several months ago and the guidance was to, uh, initiate a stormwater advisory committee. Uh, we've met with that committee three times and this presentation is kind of report back, uh, the, the overall, uh, findings and recommendations of, of that committee. So we'll kind of walk through this. I'll start off with some of the current systems and then I'll turn it over to, uh, Anna for the, kind of how we, how the committee came to their recommendations. So, kind of starting off, you know, the, what's, what's driving this is the current state of our inf- infrastructure, uh, with the localized flooding, stream bank issues, corrugated metal pipe. And the, the goal is to find some, some way of, or some form of funding that will, you know, sustainable funding that is, uh, will support the operations and maintenance, uh, of our stormwater infrastructure. With that, um, kind of bottom line up front with the Stormwater Utility Committee, uh, the two main goals were to look at level of service and then funding options. Uh, we, we talked about the, uh, options one and two, which was, uh, option one being that basic level of service where we had one operations and maintenance crew plus the support staff. And then option two, the handful of two crews. And the recommendation from the committee was to go with that enhanced level at option two, where we have two operations and maintenance crew, where we can, uh, conduct more proactive maintenance, uh, on our, uh, infrastructure system and, and instead of, uh, being totally reactive, uh, to that. And on the funding side, and we previously talked about options with sales prop, uh, sales tax, property tax and the user charge. And, uh, the, uh, the advisory committee recommended the, uh, user charge, um, for this, uh, based on impervious area, uh, with that direct connection that we have, um, from the runoff generated by that. So, uh, with that, um, kind of introduction and where we're at, um, with, with the committee, I'll turn it over to, to Anna, who will walk through kind of how we, the committee came to these recommendations.
Thank you. Okay, so the, the reason that, why we're here tonight talking about stormwater is because the stormwater program is facing increasing needs. These needs are driven by, or these needs, they, the current funding sources, the tax revenue. Um, funding source is not sufficient in order to meet those increasing needs. So there's a need to identify what that funding source is. The current source, it's not sufficient and it's not sustainable. So we need to look and see what we can find for an additional funding source going forward that would be sufficient and will be sustainable. So as George kind of mentioned, what's, what's driving this in, increasing costs is really that right now, often maintenance is very, it's reactive. And as we know, being reactive is more expensive than being proactive. So we need to move the utility into being proactive and addressing those needs before they become a problem, a bigger problem than they are now. That means doing more inspections, doing more routine maintenance in order to keep up with, with those issues. Um, in addition, so costs associated with the permit that the stormwater, um, program needs to maintain, those costs are going up as well. And of course, the utility needs to be in compliance with that permit, so that's another driver. We need to enhance the level of service that's being provided to your customers. So getting out there ahead of the problems, addressing all of the outstanding, um, service orders and taking care of that infrastructure that's needed to really control all of the stormwater runoff throughout the community. And in order to address these drivers, it's gonna require, um, organizational capacity. So with regards to both the personnel as well as funding. So these are the steps that we use in order to, to do this analysis. So we started at the top there was identifying the program requirements. So we started with basically what level of service needs to be provided to the community? What will the community get from that level of service? And what is that level of service going to cost? So then we moved to look at, okay, so now we've kind of identified, um, you know, what those drivers are, what the challenges are, what the solution is. How much is that going to cost? So then how are we going to fund that? As I mentioned, the current funding sources aren't sufficient and not sustainable. So we need to look for another source. But then we need, we need to, to take into consideration, once we've identified what that source is and how it can be used to, to fully fund the stormwater needs, how can we sustain that within the community? So coming up with a funding source that's going to carry not only the utility, but the community going forward in addressing the stormwater needs. Okay, so we'll talk a little bit more here, look at some numbers. So, when we look at, at developing a stormwater rate, there's really kind of three steps here. The first one is identifying what those costs are. So what we're showing there, um, on the top, the annual stormwater revenue requirements, we developed a five-year financial plan, so from 2025 to 2029, identifying what the level of service should be each year. And again, we looked at two scenarios, what we called the base scenario and the enhanced scenario, and identifying the cost for each year for those two options. What we're showing here are the costs for the enhanced scenario, which was the proposed scenario that the SWAC supported, the Stormwater... the enhanced scenario, which was the proposed scenario that the SWAC supported, the Stormwater Advisory Committee supported. So, you can see that those costs started a little under $5 million per year, starting in 2025, and increasing to about 6.9 million by 2029. So, we know what our costs are. So, now we need to take a look at how we're going to recover those costs from your customers. So, our billing basis is impervious area. And again, that is the industry standard when it comes to setting stormwater fees and recovering costs associated with stormwater. You know, some utilities, you know, use property tax, sales tax, but impervious area is the industry standard. And again, that's what the Stormwater Advisory Committee recommended moving forward with. So, we have developed the amount of impervious area for every parcel within the service area. Based on that analysis, we've, we've identified that there's a little, there's about 485,000 stormwater billing units. A billing unit is 500 square feet of impervious area. So, divide the dollars by the units, and that gets us our, our unit cost. So, in 2025, it'd be about 81 cents per 500 square feet per month. And then, that increases over the five-year period. So, by 2029, that's $1.18 per 500 square feet per month. So, we'll take a look a little bit more of what exactly that looks like. But I want to show you the, the costs here first. So, when we talk about the costs associated with providing stormwater service, we're talking about a bunch of, several different categories. The main one is operations and maintenance expense. This is, you know, drainage maintenance, meeting your compliance requirements, your admin requirements, and any capital needs as well, infrastructure. So, that's what the, the green section of the bars relates to. And you can see that that is the largest piece. So, you can see how that's increasing over time. So, as George mentioned, the, one of the, the biggest components, largest components in that O&M is that maintenance crew. So, right now, there's a five-person crew. It's not dedicated to stormwater. Under this plan, starting in 2025, stormwater would have a dedicated five-person crew. And the whole point of having that crew is to become reactive, become proactive instead of reactive. So, getting ahead of those problems before they become a problem. You can see then that there's an increase in the, in the green section, the O&M, in 2027. Under this proposed scenario, that's when the second five-person crew comes in. So, at that point, stormwater will have 10 dedicated stormwater maintenance workers. And you can see then, again, there's another slight increase out in 2029. This has to do with the corrugated metal pipe program. So, what we're doing in addition to adding those crews is adding more funding for the corrugated, corrugated metal pipe program. So, we're, we're adding costs associated with that in '25. We're bumping it up in '27. And then, we're bumping that up even more in 2029. So, you can see we're making these gradual increases over time to try to get the utility to where it needs to be by, by the fifth year. One of the things that I also want to point out here, of course, we were showing the proposed fee per 500 square feet for each year. So, you can see how that's increasing. One of our goals was to make sure that we're increasing that fairly, fairly steady from year to year, so not having a big jump one year and then holding it for a few years. But kind of having, you know, an annual crease, increase each year so your customers can get used to paying just a little bit more each year. The way that we achieved that was by having a rate stabilization fund. So, that's what the dark blue portion of the bar is. You can see in 2025 and 2026, we're, we're recovering revenue for that rate stabilization fund, and we're putting it aside. And in '27, when we know that there's a bump by adding that second five-person crew, we're then going to pull some of the funds out of that rate stabilization fund to help fund that. That helps us mitigate having a significant rate increase from '26 to '27. And so, you can see the blue that's kind of on, underneath the zero dollars, looks like it's a negative, that's when we're pulling from that rate stabilization fund to help, to help cover those costs that are increasing in 2027 and then again in, in 2029. Okay? So, that's the way that the financial plan was put together. So, what we're showing here is what that proposed charge, annual charge will look like for seven different types of customers. So, we looked at the customers in terms of what type the customer class is. Is it residential, commercial, is it a residential customer, a commercial, an industrial customer? We have all of that information from the, the parcel data that we were given to know what type of property it is to identify different customer classes. So, what we're showing here are, for each of those, a couple different examples. So, if we just look at the residential, what we have, what we're showing here is a residential parcel with a small amount of impervious area, 800 square feet, one with a little bit more, 2,000 square feet, and then 3,500 square feet. So, when I, when I use the term impervious area, what I'm talking about there very specifically with regards to, say, a residential property, we're talking about the footprint of the house, not, not the square footage, but the, just the, the footprint. So, kind of the roof line. We're also picking up the driveway. We're picking up any private sidewalks. We're picking up the patio, picking up, you know, if there happens to be a, a tennis court or a basketball court. All of that is being picked up as impervious area. So, the median home size in terms of, and again, not square footage, but in terms of impervious area, is 3,500 square feet. So, that's what the top there, the 3,500 square feet, that represents the median residential customer. So, a billing unit is 500 square feet. So, billing unit for that, for line three, there would be seven billing units. If you multiply that by $1.18 per 500 square feet per month, it's an annual charge of right under $100. Okay? The monthly charge for that would be about $8.26. Well, that's the median impervious area. The average is probably going to be a little bit lower than that. So, if you look at the, the 2,000, or if you look at, if you consider even a 2,500 parcel with about 2,500 square feet of impervious area, that monthly charge is going to be somewhere around $4.75 up to maybe $6. Okay? Have a couple examples there for commercial. Again, you can see, you know, depending on the amount of impervious area, what the annual charge looks like. For those examples shown there, the parcel with 2,500 square feet would pay about $5.90. The 5,000 would be about $11.80 a month. There's no difference in the rate or the way that the rate is applied, whether it's a residential or a commercial or industrial. It's exactly the same. We're just showing you examples for different types of properties so you can kind of understand, you know, when you think about properties in the community, where they might fall. And then, there's a couple examples there for industrial, assuming, you know, this is maybe a very large factory, a big parking lot, a lot of impervious area. So, you can see what the annual charge would look like for those types of properties as well. Okay. So, so we have conducted three Stormwater Advisory Committee meetings. We had really good attendance at those. We had about 11 or 12 people attend all three of those meetings. We had really good dialogue. It was a very vocal group. I think they learned a lot about stormwater that they didn't know. It also made us aware that the community is not, and I don't mean this as an insult, it is not very educated about stormwater, just based on some of the questions that were asked. And, you know, one of the things we talked about is, is, you know, how, how is stormwater funded right now? And several people thought that it was just on their water bill and they were paying it. So, you know, a lot of it was about educating this group on stormwater, how it's currently funded and what its needs are. And so, like I said, they were very vocal and paid, paid attention to what we were discussing. So, it was, it was a really good group. So, at the end of the third meeting, let me just go here really quick so you can understand the topics that we were discussing in each of those three sections. The first one was really just an overview of stormwater. So, talking about the, the system, talking about the historical content, how far back the concept of, of implementing a stormwater fee has been discussed through the years, the level of service, really going into a lot of detail on the level of service, what the current costs are and the needs and what those costs are and why those are the costs and what would be the benefit of increasing the level of service. And then, we did a stakeholder perspective, perspect, perspect, sorry, perspectives poll, just to get kind of their, their feedback on if they, if they understood what the needs were and if they agreed with those needs. So, just to kind of get an idea of where we were at with regards to the group and their, and their understanding. The second session then was when we really kind of talked about the numbers. So, we presented the five-year financial plan for both of the options, walked through that in a lot of detail, a lot more detail than we've talked to tonight, and talked about the strategies for how to fund those costs. So, we talked about funding it from sales tax, funding those costs with property tax, and the utility charge structure, so based on impervious area. And we showed examples of what it could look like if it was funded from sales tax and property tax or the user charge. And then, we also looked at, at some example bill impacts. The third session was kind of then a recap to kind of bring it all together for everyone. So, we went back, talked about the, the costs again for the two options, the funding mechanisms. And then, we provided the, the SWAC members with a survey for them to give their feedback and their suggestions on what we would bring to you for consideration. So, what I'm going to present next is the feedback that we received from this group. So, the, the first area that we wanted to focus on was the level of service. So, again, as George mentioned, we had provided the two scenarios, the base, which the base was really just at, was having one five-person dedicated stormwater crew and doing some additional funding in the other areas in corrugated metal pipe. The enhanced was the two five-person crew, more dedicated funding for the corrugated metal pipe program, adding a couple other positions as well for asset management and stormwater master plan. So, the feedback that we got when we asked about the level of service, the, the Stormwater Advisory Committee, you know, understood that the, the stormwater needs to be able to provide those services and investments that are currently funded through, through the general fund. So, one of their questions when we first started was, well, how is stormwater being paid for? So, we had that conversation. So, they understand, okay, now that's, that's coming from the general fund and that's not sustainable. Additional funding's necessary. Okay? So, they understood that. So, the funding solution, they understood using tax, using sales tax or property tax. It's not, it's not, not a choice right now. It's not sustainable. It's not equitable. We showed examples of, you know, how much, you know, you spend on groceries has nothing to do with how much stormwater runoff your property contributes, as an example. All parcels should contribute to stormwater recovery. So, whether it's a tax-exempt parcel or non-tax exempt, they would pay the same fee. If it's a parcel with no impervious area, even parcels with no impervious area contribute stormwater runoff. A parcel, a vacant land, after several hours of heavy rain, will not be able to saturate that, that, that rainwater will not saturate into the property, and it will eventually run off of the property. And so, properties with no impervious area also need to be included in, in this plan. And, and the Stormwater Advisory Committee understood that. They also understood that the stormwater user charge is the most appropriate solution for, for addressing those funding needs. The stormwater user charge based on impervious area provides that direct link from parcel that contributes the stormwater runoff and what is being, and what that parcel would pay, linking it to the impervious area. Then, the fee basis and the rate structure, again, looking at the impervious area base charge, they agreed with a billing unit of 500 square feet of impervious area. It's easy to understand. It's easy to do the math. If you're thinking about your property right now and trying to calculate it in your head, you can divide by 500 and, and figure out what, what you might pay per month. It is acceptable, the Stormwater Advisory Committee agreed that it's acceptable to have a, a minimum monthly charge of 500 square feet. Mainly, that's just because there's costs associated with calculating the bill, extending the bill, recovering that revenue. And so, a, a, a charge of less than 500 square feet wouldn't cover the cost even just with, associated with billing. And so, they agreed that everybody would pay a minimum charge of 500 square feet. And then, as I mentioned, also discussing about parcels with no impervious area, they, they understood and agreed that those parcels do contribute runoff and therefore those parcels should be included. Okay. The next topic was public outreach and education. So, a, as I mentioned, this group came in, some of them had more knowledge about stormwater than others. Some of them, it was, their knowledge was based on their property and what they see and, and issues that they have and, and communication that they've had with the city regarding stormwater issues. Others came in not really knowing, knowing a whole lot. So, they felt that, you know, more education is needed on, on the, the failing infrastructure, what happens if the city does nothing, what are the cost consequences of that. So, and we're talking about this really, as we think about the public as a whole, in order to feel comfortable with and moving forward with a stormwater fee, what do we need to, how do we need to educate the public? So, explaining the city budget and where that money gets spent and where the piece is for stormwater management, that was one of the, the questions that were asked. Stormwater should be able to provide performance metrics on stormwater issues and the activities performed. So, basically, you know, the community would want to see where's their money going? What are they getting for that? So, you know, how, how much pipe was replaced last month? You know, how much is going to be, be replaced going forward? You know, how many sinkholes were, were, were fixed? How many inlets were cleaned out? Seeing some kind of a, of a record of what's that, what are those funds being used for and what's the community getting for that? So, explaining the community-wide benefits and the improvements that can be achieved. And then, demonstrating that to the public, right? So, having a history of financial stewardship and continuing that forward to show that you, you know, that, that stormwater appreciates those funds coming from the public and is using those wisely going forward. Some of the, the key concerns, again, that the 500 square feet as a billing unit, they felt that was easy to understand. They understood the meaningful cost recovery. It's acceptable to have that minimum charge. And then, finally, impervious, parcels with no impervious area, again, they understood that it was appropriate to include those parcels in the calculation. So, overall concerns, when we talked about the, the five-year funding plan, their concern was just, you know, it's just about the dollars. But basically, what we'll be asking is for the community and pay more for stormwater service in order to mitigate stormwater. So, you know, one of the things that they had suggested that we keep in mind is to manage effectively within that five-year funding. So, again, you know, providing that information, how those funds are going to be used, then providing the proof of how those funds were used and what the community got for that. So, monitoring that performance and then preparing for the next five years' funding needs. So, you know, when the utility's in a position where it needs to go ask for the next round of funding, it can point back to, here's what we did with the first round of funding. Here's now why we need the second round. The city's approach and capacity to make a compelling case to the voters. What they had suggested was that we, you know, have a, a very effective public outreach campaign and using a combination, we talked about like some of the information that's on the website, having videos, having a website specifically for just the stormwater user fee, brochures. And then, there'll be a round of public, assuming that this goes forward, there'd be a round of, of public open houses. So, having storyboards all around the room and videos and, and print materials so that the public can educate themselves as much as they want to on this topic. And then, to the extent necessary to reach out to the public for, in order for the ballot measure to be successful, defining-- measure to be successful, defining those key messages to communicate the SWAC's feedback. So have the entire community understand that a group of them were part of this process. And so we were able to gauge how the community as a whole, in terms of what questions they have, where do they need additional education, and how they feel about this topic. So have the community understand that we did have a representative group of them participating in, in this process. And then including those target communications in order to, to meet the, the different messaging needs for the stakeholder groups. So, you know, having messaging specifically for residential customers, specifically for the larger commercial customers that have very large buildings and large parking lots, you know, the message that we prepare for those communities, for those parcels may be different than residential. So just keeping that in mind, that, that this is a very diverse community and we need to recognize that. Okay, so the road ahead. So what we're looking at, you know, as we've kind of, sorry, gone through this, is, is there's really two sides to this, right? There's, there's the need and there's the funding and it's kind of a tug of war. The goal here is to meet in the, in the middle, to have the funding capacity that we need in order to address those problems so that both sides get, get what they need. Okay. So that's my presentation.
So, so kind of in closing, the, the, why we're here is we're seeking council guidance and direction on this. Because initially, one of the requests was to, you know, do we want to go forward with a, a ballot measure in November? So if we want to do that, we need council direction to, for staff to prepare an ordinance. Or we also need to respond to any additional questions or other guidance or concerns you may have before we go down that road. So at this time, we have to answer questions.
Yeah, before I turn over to council, let me try to help from the layman's terms on our side, because you guys are technical and you've had hours and hours in front of a committee. So I want to summarize a few things so the council can ask questions related to those. So can you go to like slide number four, stormwater management challenges? One more, I think. There we go.
Okay.
Whatever slide that is. So you've got localized flooding, steam, stream bank degradation, silt buildup, corrugated metal pipe deterioration, and of course reactive operations and maintenance, which we do currently, but we, it's hard for us to keep up. So how do we, when you talk about later in these slides, you're talking about how we can address these issues more proactively. So we can more proactively try to head off the flooding issues that we've had in the past in the community, the stormwater flooding?
Yes, we can. Sometimes flooding is issue, is caused by clogged inlets or culverts filled with debris.
Got it.
So if we have a more active inspection program, we can have, you know, regular, you know, we just create a work order where we have, you know, crews can, can do more of that. The other is, part of this utility includes engineering staff. So that means we can, we would have the opportunity to do some more, you know, where we know we've had reported issues with flooding, we can look at the infrastructure in that area and maybe develop some capital projects to expand the capacity to the system.
Okay, so, so there could be, we can look at capital projects with the engineers. It's not necessarily, this is not necessarily supposed to be a revenue source for the capital projects though, like we have with the CIP and such?
There, there's a limited capacity for that.
But there is some.
Yes.
If there was something, because we have some older parts of town where you got, you got a, a half block or a block, whatever. Okay. Then what, we're talking about a dollar, well, 81 cents and then you move it up over the course of time. Do you want to use the 81 cents per or you want to use the $1.18? Which one do you want to use, just for this conversation for right now?
Our thought on this conversation is use the higher number because if we do a ballot measure, that would probably be the request.
So at a $1.18, right? And if it was $99 a year, you're talking about $8 a month. Is that correct? Something like that?
Eight twenty-five.
Eight twenty-five. So this would be, just so the council knows what we're talking about, this would be $8.25 a month on your water bill?
Well, there's, there's two options to that.
Okay.
It could either go on the water bill or if we, if it's done through the, the county collector's office, then it would be an annual fee of $100 on that annual.
And what was the committee's recommendation on that?
They were leaning towards working with the county on the annual billing. Because there, there's some issues with when you do it on a monthly basis, just the maintenance of the properties and the parcels. It, you, you start triggering policies like, what do we do if somebody doesn't pay their bill? And you start getting into water, water shut-offs and what part gets that? And then we have, you know, parcels in the city that aren't on the wa- currently on our water billing system like District 13.
All right. What would be the, you're talking about, you know, you gave all, all the examples, $1.18 and, you know, for 500 feet, cubic, square feet. What, what's the total budget? What, what are we shooting for? Because you had to back into that price. Oh, there it is. It's $6,877,000. Got it. Okay? And then, so of that, where, most of that, I saw the breakdown for the employee compensation or the operations and maintenance. So there is a little bit of capital, like you said, cash finance capital. Is that what that purple is that you were talking about, Mr. Binger?
Cash finance. Yes.
So that's where you could use a little bit of that for some infrastructure?
Yes.
Okay. And then on this education piece, because that would be pretty big, you're talking about, I mean, we'd, we'd, we'd need to be able to spell all this out the way I'm asking you these questions now so that everybody understands that flooding can be, be, be prevented with better maintenance. We'd need, we'd need good videos of stuff like that. We'd need good websites for, for that to help us because we're not the experts up here and we, we need, we would need a tremendous amount of help with regard to the education piece as to how this could be effective and, and how it's, it's better than what we have and much more proactive and can prevent flooding in certain areas. Guess, I guess I need to know, I wasn't clear on which direction you wanted to go with this though. You were talking about the dollar amounts, but you weren't talking about how they would get, or what, what you're looking for as far as us, as far as feedback on, did you ask us about the personal property versus the, or the, the property tax assessment versus the monthly billing?
Uh, we did not.
Okay. All right. Okay, so that's stuff that council needs to start talking about and asking questions about. So I'll turn it over to council from there. Councilmember Demoral?
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, you just mentioned the county. I, I, I'm, I'm very curious how, how that would work. I, I'll go ahead and let you finish, then I'll comment.
Okay, working with the tax bill, basically we entered an agreement with the county and then that's, they'll, they'll add that to the bill annually and then they'll process the payment and then we receive the revenue from that payment.
But would they would charge us a fee to do that for, for the benefit of the city, correct?
There is, there is an administrative fee to that, but generally the administrative fee for the annual billing is less than the administrative fee associated with the monthly billing. Because with the monthly billing, there's a lot more, there's a, there's generally a higher overhead cost.
So then we would be using part of our, part of our revenue for billing, correct? From, from the, from the stormwater management fee?
That, that's part of the administrative support that's included in that cost. This, these numbers here include that administrative cost required for the billing.
The, the cost, which, which cost? The, the revenue requirements, the annual revenue requirements, that, that actually has the...
Yeah, there's an allowance in there to recognize that whether it's, whether it's billed through the utility bill or through the tax assessor, that there would be a charge associated with that. Because even if it's billed through the, say, on the water bill, there might be modifications that are needed to be made to the billing system. And so we need to recognize there should be, could be some costs associated with that. One of the advantages of billing it through the tax assessor office is that there's a greater collection rate than with, through the utility bill.
I, I do have reservations about going through the county. I, I, I certainly do and that's just my personal opinion. I, I, I really, I wonder just how accurate they would be, number one. Number two, I have a, I have a, a problem giving the county any more money. I'll just say it straight out. And so the city would be, would be a software update. We would have to have a, a collection software update to allow the, the water services to, to do this, correct?
It, it's possible. If that was the, the direction that we would want to go, our next step would be to talk to the, the utility billing staff, get an understanding of what the software is, probably have a, a call with the, the vendor to understand, you know, if changes need to be made, how complicated is that going to be? It, it takes longer to implement a fee that's going to be billed on, on the water bill because we have to, right now, all of our data is based on parcel. So now we have to match a parcel to a utility account. And it's a lot more difficult than, than it sounds because there's parcels that, that don't have impervious area, they don't have a utility account. So then the utility has to create new accounts for all of those parcels. We also have to deal with parcels that may be, like a condominium, that maybe receives multiple water bills, but it's one parcel. So we have to work through all of, all of those logistics if we're going to build it through the water utility. It can be done. It's done in many places. But it is easier and more efficient to do it through the tax assessor's office. But we're not, we're not recommending either one. It, it's based on, on, you know, having those discussions and understanding the, the current utility system and just to identify which one makes more sense.
And, and your example of a condominium, that condominium owner, that, 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 the owner of that particular building would have to divide the charge that they're paying up with the tenants, correct? And of course, you would have to assume that everybody would be equal. So, so moving on from the, from the, I'm, I'm sure everybody else has, has comments on that too. The, the, who calculates the impervious area of, of a, of a, of a, let's say, residential home? How would that be calculated?
So the data that we use was developed by Certex Corporation. They have access to the aerial imagery that the Mid-American Regional Council updates on a regular basis. So Certex has access to that data. So they were able to use that aerial imagery, identify the impervious area, and then lay it over the parcel polygon layer to get the impervious area per parcel. So that step alone took, I think, maybe six months or so, as we kind of just waited for them to do, to do their work so that we could then, in the meantime, we were identifying the costs and then bring it all together.
And it's, it's, I, I assume that it's, it's very accurate. In other words, it would only pick up rooftops and driveways and patios and things like that.
Right. They, they fly during leaf-off, so usually like, you know, late January, February is when it's flown. And again, that's for the whole Kansas City metro. So other communities in the metro, that's also going through the same process, is using the same data.
And then I'll just end on, I, the education piece is going to be huge. It's going to take a lot of work because I was kind of surprised by some of the comments of, of people not realizing we even had a problem. And that, that sort of set me back because I, you know, I've been, I've been talking about stormwater, been, you know, in conversation with stormwater for many, many years. And for somebody who did not even know we have a stormwater problem, kind of set me back and I thought, wow, we're going to have to really work hard on that. But thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Felker?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for your all's presentation. Thank you, Councilmember Demoral for your questions. In regards to county versus monthly, I would, I will just echo that it seems like we'll want some more data to be able to parse through that. I would share some of Councilmember Demoral's reservations and I think you could convince me otherwise. And I, I don't know enough now to make a, a good decision, so I think that would be very helpful. And I appreciate the mayor's questions about the fact that this is not really intended to fund capital projects. That's not its primary aim. Its real primary aim is to increase staff to deal with, to, well, to, perhaps with number one, there was the idea of evaluating current systems, maybe making recommendations for improvements, changes, other projects we might need to later fund, largely with other dollars. And then, and then having staff on hand who can then perhaps be more proactive, go out, actually observing different, whether it's locations. I, I mean, I don't know how you get into the corrugated pipes to do that. There's probably a way to go in and look around, but I, anyway, I'm just, I'm more making an observation. You're, you're nodding your head, so I'm, we're agreeing on that. Can I, I'll just ask a few questions. You did make the observation that we're not distinguishing between commercial, residential, and industrial. And I just was going to ask, is that, is that how it's typically done, where it's not, there's not a distinguished cost between the different types of parcels?
Correct. One of the reasons why we do look at residential versus non-residential is because with a, a stormwater fee based on impervious area, there's an opportunity to offer a credit program. Typically, that only applies to non-residential customers, so that's why we do, do that breakout. What a credit program is, is it would allow non-residential parcels to have a, it's a BMP, a best management practice, stormwater structure on their property to control either the quantity of the runoff or the speed of the runoff to slow it down and, and catch it and wait to release it until a later time in order to help that, that runoff saturate into the property. And so that's something that going forward could be offered to the non-residential customer. So that's one of the reasons why we look at it, residential versus non-residential.
And, I mean, we've got hospital, we've got school district, obviously is one of, if not the biggest, party with that as a financial issue they would have to deal with. So is the idea that if this was approved, then we might, the city might offer, here's some suggestions about how you might get that, I'm sorry, if you said it's a credit?
A credit program, yes.
Uh, and then provide, and then, so they would have to invest in something, a, a different mechanism, structural or otherwise, on their property to be able to capture the benefit of the credit?
Yes, yeah. And, and there's businesses that may already have, have those structures on hand, so that, so they could, could already apply for the credit. But, but yes, if it's decided that this should move forward to a vote, we would then kind of start looking at the billing mechanism, looking at putting together a draft credit program. There would also be a process for property owners to appeal. So if they get a bill that says they have 2,000 square feet of impervious area and they know that they don't, then there's a process to appeal that and have that corrected. So all of those, those steps would take place once it's, it's determined if this is going to move forward or not.
So would there be a body on the part of the city? I, I'm just thinking, we're obviously going through different kinds of appeals right now in the county with, uh, property values. But, so where would that appeal process? Where would it happen? Is it just with city staff? Is that?
Initially, initially that would start with city staff because basically it's, it's an appeal on the impervious area and that's pretty easy to evaluate. I mean, again, it's measuring the rooftop, patios, driveways.
Send someone out to do a quick check?
Right. For example, the aerial photo, if they have a canopy or tent or something set up in the backyard and it's digitized and mapped as impervious, we'd go out and look. Oh, it's temporary. They took it down. They've got turf underneath.
Yep.
That, there could be an adjustment for something like that.
Got it. Okay. Couple question, I appreciate that. And then the committee, can you give me an idea? I didn't see in the material and I, and my memory on this is a little bit thin on who, who are the members of the committee?
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, we had, at the committee, we had representatives from Charleston Park and we had St. Luke's, Health System had a representative, Metropolitan Community College, Lee Summit School District, Rain Tree Lake Property Owner Association. We had some... We had some, uh, individuals and individual business owners from the downtown area were part of that committee. I'm looking through, Somerset, uh, and we had, uh, reps from Oak Ridge Meadows.
I don't know if my side of town. Oh, yeah, you got Longview. That, that helps, you got there, so. And I'll echo the, um, sentiment from Councilmember DeMoro about education being probably a really big piece of this. I'll confess that at some period of time before I was on council, not during, I didn't understand stormwaters either, completely, how the system worked, or even the thought that stormwater and sewer were separate. I think that's, I think a common misperception. And so, anyway, I, I, I don't think we know just how much people don't know. And how much the idea of another fee is something that, uh, vote for that? Well, why? So, um, I think there's some work to be done there. And really being able to articulate, what's, what does it look like if we don't do it? And, and then, and then perhaps part of the challenge is, we've, we've talked about the fact that this isn't funding the capital projects that may actually, on some level, that is actually the solution to some of the problems we have. Like, it's not the maintenance, it might be actually physical restructuring. So, I mean, it, it may even be, I mean, for a utility to actually fund that, I would guess we were looking, we would be looking at much larger numbers. And is that something that was discussed?
On, on the capital side?
Right. Like, if you were to actually implement a utility that is intended to fund the projects, what would that look like?
At this point, we didn't pursue that because we've, we've looked, in the past, we've used bond issues or our CIP sales tax for stormwater. I, I think where the utility piece would come into play i- is we don't really have, is, is what helped us, it would really help us develop a good stormwater master plan. And with that master plan, that's where we can, you know, video the pipes, we can do that, those inspection of the entire system. And from that, that will help us build a, a better, you know, a better capital program. Because as of now, our capital program is fairly reactive. It's basically respond to known structural flooding. Whereas if we're looking at, you know, there's been many, you know, comments about, you know, the downtown core. Do we, you know, we want it, do we want the curb and gutter streets, sidewalks, enclosed storm sewer? Do we want the open ditch? Do we want to start looking at our CMP rehab and replace that? Do we need to, you know, increase a, you know, larger pipe size, carry more water to the pipe? Things like that would come out of a master plan, and that would really help refine this. And kind of thinking longer term, uh, with our current, um, CIP sales tax that was approved in 2017, it sunsets in 2032. So at some point, you know, we, we may have that conversation in about 10 years of what do, do we want to pursue that? How, how do we want that sales tax to look if we want to pursue that again? So those are some things that I, I think if the master planning component of this can help with that, and I think it gets back to that, that helps with that educational piece of explaining, you know, we can do this with this money. And, and that's, I, I think that's why some of our capital, uh, programs have been fairly successful, is we can, we are doing this with this money. It's fairly easy to explain. This is really hard to explain.
Is, does the water utility function similarly in terms of how the funds are allocated? I'm not sure if this is a fair question, because you may not be prepared to ask, answer it, but, you know, you, you, on your slide, you talked about where, where it's allocated. And this is, yeah, is, is there similar?
Yeah, the, the, the stormwater utility, it's, it's a user fee utility just like water and wastewater. So the, the five-year financial plan of the different categories that we're showing here, it's exactly the same if we're doing a, a water rate study or a wastewater rate study.
The, the proportions may be different because, like, right now, the, with water utilities, um, you know, they're, they have their, um, their, their use, the water fees, the, you know, the monthly billing that they collect, and then they have the tax fee program. Those, um, their capital funding comes out of that.
Good point. Yep, yep. Okay. Okay. Well, I, I'll just go back. Yes, there's, there's, from a user perspective. So I, it's just under, underlines our challenge of how to communicate it to the voter. You know, I use my water, I use, I flush my toilet, so I, I see that. And I suppose for those who may be really, uh, actually physically impacted by stormwater, meaning they, maybe they have a problem, those people might be maybe more anxious to engage in this kind of issue. But for others, it might be a little bit of a disconnect. So somehow bringing that to, bringing the reality or the need is, I think, gonna, I think is going to be a challenge for us to do that. My other question is maybe, is actually somewhat is legal. And I guess maybe this isn't any different than other ballot measures we've, we've, uh, had before. So we've talked a lot about messaging and promote, like, are we, we would approach this like any other ballot measure, meaning the city can produce informational material, but it's not really our position where we can advocate to, to the voter, yea or nay. Is that accurate?
That would be correct. Informational, but not advocacy.
Okay. Which we've kind of been talking about advocacy and the way we talk through this. But just.
I've been pretty, I've been listening pretty carefully to make sure I pull back on anybody that's taking a strong position to, I don't think anybody's made many bad statements.
No, I'm not. And I'm not worried. I'm just kind of refreshing my own memory on that, that we, uh,
As sort of a related thought to that, the council hasn't taken any action to advance a ballot measure, so we're not really into that stage yet.
Got it. Just more of a fact finding, how would, how would this kind of thing even be presented?
I would characterize everything that we're discussing right now as informational and fact finding.
Yeah. Thank you. Appreciate that. Thank you both. Mayor, I think that's my questions for now.
Thank you. Mayor Tim Lopez.
Thanks, Mayor. Um, so I don't want to repeat some of the questions that have already been asked. All good questions. For the most part, I agree with the opinions that have been stated already. And thank you guys for the presentation and giving us an update on the process to this point. This is a tougher topic to, to discuss than, uh, you know, something like a brand-new fire station or, or new streets, uh, or new roads in, in the city. I think those are easier sales, I guess, uh, because they're more visible. And it's kind of exciting to see something new. And I think we all agree up here. We do have water problems, stormwater issues. I think we all agree on that. So it comes down to, you're trying to get our perspective of how we feel and do we dare attempt another ballot initiative? And, um, I know citizens in this city have been so supportive with many, many measures, a lot of public safety type, you know, initiatives. And, um, so I agree with the comments that have been made. I think we need to be real careful and really think this through on how we go and ask our citizens again, um, that we need them to step up again. So, uh, the, you know, again, I don't want to sound redundant, but the messaging, the education, those are going to be critical if, if we go to some kind of ballot initiative. I do have a question, though. Like, working backwards, we're looking at November. You said there's a lot of steps need to be taken before that, between now and then. How much time do you need? I mean, we're June now, almost, June's halfway, almost, I guess we're almost done, or halfway.
We kind of backed into today's date based on how much time we needed before the November election. So we do need, you know, whether it's tonight or, or two weeks from tonight, whenever we get the go-ahead, to start with the next steps. We have, we have time to get all that completed by November.
Okay. Okay. So no pressure, right? And then I, I think just, Councilmember DeMoro, I, I have to agree with this comment about, you know, just, we need to really further evaluate the fee collection, whether we go through the county or create our own process, internal process. That really needs to be fleshed out before we communicate that to the public, I think, from an operational point of view. Let's see, uh, yeah, I think in general, if you're just wanting feedback, at least from my perspective, I think we all agree. I think this is so critical for, for our city to continue to move forward and continue to grow. If we don't address this issue, we're going to continue to have problems. So, um, I appreciate your efforts. I think we, yes, I think we need to head towards some kind of ballot initiative, but let's just make sure we really dot the i's, cross the t's, and, and, uh, make the message as clear as possible. And yeah, I mean, I think I'd be supportive in general, so that helps. Thanks, Mayor.
Okay. Um, we got some more here. I just want to, a couple things, um, before I keep going, just, two, two things. One would be other cities, I didn't see comparisons to how they collect these types of fees. Can you give us a general overview of that?
So the ones that I've worked with, um, have all collected it through the utility. A really close example is Kansas City, Kansas, Unified Government of Wyandotte County. We're in the process of implementing the fee there. That's going to be, um, charged through the Board of Public Utilities on the water and electric account. That is the most common because it helps customers to understand that stormwater is a utility. Like I mentioned earlier, just like water and wastewater. So we always recommend is the first option, if possible, is to put it on the utility bill. You know, when you put it on the tax bill, people think it's a tax, right, obviously. So ideally, it would go on, on the water bill, and that's how the majority of them are. There's just some instances where it makes more sense, um, to put it on the tax bill. And so this, and here, this may be one of those instances where that makes more sense.
Okay. And do most cities, um, it's hard to say, I understand, most is bad, is not a great word, but, um, is this type of, uh, utility fee, um, common?
So there's about, um, 2,500 stormwater utilities in the United States. It's still, it's, it's growing. It's kind of a young, a young industry compared to water and wastewater. The, um, majority of those utilities do have a fee based on impervious area. We do a, a national stormwater survey every three years, and then there's also Western Kentucky University also does a stormwater survey. And so we kind of gauge with those two surveys, um, you know, how utilities are, more stormwater utilities are coming online, how they're billing, what their fee structure is, all of that information. And so impervious area is the most common method for, for charging, for recovering stormwater costs.
I think, uh, just to help counsel, I'm going to look to you for a second, Mr. Denning, or, uh, Mr. Binger, you can answer this question. But when I think about what, the times we've been in this room, and it's been very emotional, citizens with regard to, let's say, stormwater, I think about Oaks Ridge, I think about, um, Orchard Street, my first year, that was horrible. I think about the downtown a little bit, because we've had flooding right out in front of City Hall. Mr. Binger, give me some more. What are we talking about? What, what are some of the stuff where it relates to us so that we can, um, um, talk about times where these are conversations that affected other decisions we were making about developments?
Well, like, um, Oak Ridge Meadows, we've, we've got overtopping on Anderson Road, Chipman Road, west of Bu-hi, that road overtops during heavy rain.
West of Bu-hi?
Yes.
Okay, I got you.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. West of Bentry, between Bentry and Bu-hi. Yes, I'm sorry. That, that, that will overtop during heavy rain events. We, I know when we get on the east side of town, Fifth Terrace, Third Street, those are streams that overtop.
Vista del Verde area and stuff?
Yeah, Vista del Verde, yeah, the East Fork of Little Blue, Todd George, Timber Creek Drive, um, those areas over top. Then our lake communities, generally, mo- the most common complaint we get from our lake communities is the litter and trash that ends up in the lakes.
Right.
And that's, and it, um, then, uh, we've had issues.
Could this crew be able to put in stormwater, like into, uh, the actual stormwater drains that are on streets? Things to help catch the, the?
It's, it can. It's challenging, though, because when you, once you put grates and screens on it, you create the potential for flooding.
Okay, well, we don't want flooding. We don't want more flooding, less flooding.
I'm thinking, uh, thirty, uh, Thirty-Fourth Street, um, Thirty-Third, Thirty-Fourth Street off of, um, Ward Road, Southwest Ward Road, backs up to a vacant field. We've, we've had homes flood in that area. Again, that was undeveloped land, that the amount of runoff was flooding several homes in that area.
Okay, that's, that's good. Let me turn it over to councilmembers. Councilmember Shields?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so I'm looking at this chart that you have up right now, and it says, like, operation and maintenance expense is kind of the bulk of what we're talking about. You've talked about an additional 10 staff people dedicated to, to this issue. Is that right?
This include, this includes 10 personnel dedicated for operations and maintenance, plus their equipment. It includes engineering staff, um, for, for the engineering capital. It includes a, a public educator for stormwater, because that's a requirement in our permit, is public education. And it includes, uh, an environmental specialist, um, again, for the permit compliance.
Okay.
And, and then administrative staff. So like, if, if we have like a, you know, billing, you know, clerical billing, uh, call center, customer service.
Okay.
So that's all included in this.
What, what kind of equip, are there new equipment that they need for this that we don't have currently?
Well, with the additional staff and crew, they would need their own equipment. So it would be dump truck, um, VACO, trailer. It's the, it's the similar equipment that we have, currently have in operations. It's just now we have more people, so we need more equipment to support the crew.
Okay. And then it's, and I, I think we've sort of covered this from other questions, but this is mostly maintenance of what's existing. We're not really talking about a lot of new capital projects, right?
This is maintaining what's existing, but part of this on the maintenance side is when we, this allows us to get in these areas where we have the corrugated metal pipe, to where we can start replacing that and thus reducing that maintenance burden.
Right. Which, which is important, but it's not new, it's just, it's just fixing the existing infrastructure, right?
Correct.
So when we talk about some of these big problem areas, um, and I think the mayor just listed several of them, would those get fixed with this? Or are they going to continue having the same issues, but we're hoping that with the master planning and the engineering support, we can start to find, find solutions for them?
It, it would be the, the, the engineering and master plan and process is how we would develop the solutions to that. Because part of this is, like, in some of these examples, we may be partnering with HOAs or, or communities because we may have to do some stuff, you know, that's not in the right of way or outside of easements and things of that nature.
I guess, I, I, I think it's probably necessary. I think that we, we have a lot of issues that need to get addressed, but I do have sort of a concern with, like, we're looking at a pretty large budget, a pretty big ask to our taxpayers. And to a large extent, what we're offering them is the status quo. Like, we're going to try and clean things up, we're going to try and replace what's there, but we're not offering new detention basins, we're not offering new, um, stormwater sewers, things that are actually going to make a material impact to these problem areas, is to me what it sounds like. Now, some of these fixes, you know, cleaning it up, cleaning up the silt, fixing the stream banks, all that, that may improve some of these, but it doesn't sound like it's probably like really going to solve all of them. So I, I'm not opposed to moving forward. I'm just sort of concerned that we may be, that people may think that we're offering more than we are with this. And then I, I sort of wonder, you know, the master planning, I, I know that's a, a large process that costs money, but like, is that something that really requires a new tax? Because we have all kinds of master plans. We have, you know, the street master plans and, and sidewalk master plans. Like, what, why haven't we done that before? Is it something that's a lot more intensive than all that, that other planning that we do, that doesn't have dedicated taxes for it?
It, it's similar effort, but we, again, we don't have dedicated source for that. And that would be something that if we, if we funded that, it'd be through our, uh, general operating budget, um, for, for a stormwater master plan.
I guess I'm, I'm just worried about overpromising and under, underdelivering to what, what people might expect if we put this new tax on there and then also come to them a couple of years later and say, hey, thanks for giving us the money to study this now. We also need you to pass a big new capital improvement bond. It may be the only way forward because it is a difficult and expensive problem, but it just, that's kind of what I'm hearing, is that we're looking at a lot of maintenance, it's important, a lot of it's deferred maintenance. It's important, a lot of it's deferred maintenance, because we don't have the budget for it, but it's not necessarily big improvements. As far as the structure of it, I mean, I'm not a huge fan of the county right now either, but it seems like it might make sense to do it on the tax bills, especially because we're talking about parcels that may have multiple water bills on a parcel, or no water bills if they don't have improvements. It might just be an easier process and less expensive to us to administer, to do it through the tax bills. But either way, it's complicated. I mean, if we do it through the taxes, we need to get Jackson and Cass counties, because people want to forget the little bit of lease sum that's down in Cass. If we do it through the water district, then lease sum at Water and District 13, I don't know how easy that is to work, work out. But there's no really simple way, it seems to me, but that might be the easier. So I'm, I don't want my dislike of current policies of the county to make things more expensive for us to administer and more difficult for us to administer just because I'm personally frustrated. So just throw that out there. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Hodges.
Thank you. So I think as far, I'm going to probably echo a lot of what my other councilmembers have said as well. I'm not a fan of going through Jackson County. I'm struggling with asking our taxpayers to pay more tax. I get the need for it. I mean, I don't know, I just feel like all we, not all we've been doing, but I just feel like within the last few years, there's been, we've been asking a lot. And then we do have to take into account that Jackson County is raising everybody's taxes. That's the reality of it, just like inflation. We have to take that into account of things as well. So I don't know, I think if, if this is what we think is absolutely necessary, we need to start answering the questions of, okay, if we're going to ask this of our taxpayers, why don't we have the money for this? Where it stands now, this has been an issue for years. So why has this not been priority before? I mean, flooding didn't just start happening, and these issues didn't just come up. So why has this not been made a priority? You know, we seem to find money for other things. Why do we need to tax them more in order to find the money to pay for this? So I think those need to be put out there for the city to, or the taxpayers to understand why there's such a need for us to have them pay even more money. We need to look at, is there, I mean, I'm sure you guys have, but I mean, is there any other route we could go without making them pay more? I don't know, I just want to exhaust every avenue before we just go, well, just throw it on the taxpayers again. Because you know what? We can't, we've got to realize, at some point, we can't keep doing that. Like, it's just, it's not feasible, and I don't want to keep asking and asking and asking. At some point, we need to do our due diligence and use what we've got and be maybe a little more wise with what we've got. So that's just kind of where I'm coming from. And again, I'm going to reiterate, I don't want to, I don't want to go through Jackson County. So, thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to go to Councilmember Edson, then I'll come back to you, Councilmember Demore. Councilmember Edson.
Well, I wasn't really ready. I was ready for Councilmember.
Oh, Councilmember Demore, and then Councilmember Edson. Go ahead, Councilmember Demore.
Thank you. I, I think, again, thank you for the presentation, but I think, I think you said it when, when you said that stormwater is a utility. And, 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 you know, my frame of mind is we, we need to treat it like a utility. And I mean, we, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Binger, we, we do have access to the GIS information of, of parcels. We have absolutely information on water meters and things like that. I, I would like to, you know, see, see a, a really big effort to keep it in-house and, and use what we have. The, you know, the one thing I would ask is if, if these other communities, these other utilities are doing it in-house, if, if you could maybe research it, what, what software they're using, how, how it's implemented and things like that. Because, you know, I just feel like, you know, we're a big city. We, we usually don't depend on others. And, and in this case, I, I don't want to depend on others. But yeah, if we could, if we could just get more information on the implementation of our own stormwater utility, and, and maybe in the long run, we, we can keep the costs down rather than, than paying another entity to, to assist us. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Like I said, we work with the billing vendors in order to make that process work. We have also developed a stormwater tool that integrates with billing systems in order to provide the information needed. So if, if that's the way that, that we decide to go, we're set up to do that.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Edson.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So, George, we know that the downtown area, especially the residential areas, is a big area. I mean, you and I've walked a couple of areas where there were no stormwater pipes and no ditches. So can you, can you tell me how long it would take to start addressing some of those problems if we pass this?
I'd have to get back to you on that, because that's, that's a really big question. Because a lot of it leads to street reconstruction, which, you know, then you get into, you know, we're eliminating some of the on-street parking, we're changing the sidewalk, the layout impacts on right-of-way. And then it's how comprehensive do we want, want to look at this? So I'd have to get back on that, some type of idea of what it's going to cost downtown to do that. Because I think we're, our budget for all of an Orchard now, our last cost estimate, and that's basically about five blocks, I believe. It's, it's, it's close to, I think, six to eight million for that.
Yeah. And I apologize, it's probably an unfair question. But I'm just want to, I heard your presentation, and then I listened to some of my colleagues, and I'm like, well, are we not going to be able to address all of our problems if we, if we go ahead and pass this? I mean, if we pass this, are we going to be able to really give the voters a bang for their buck? I was looking for a recent answer on that. That may be unfair too.
Well, I mean, realistically, we're going to do what we can with whatever we got. And so if we're able to get on the proactive side of maintenance, that reduces our maintenance costs, which allows us to put more into capital side. So over time, we'll start to see that growth in, in, in the capital side and reducing the flooding issues over time. I don't know what that glide path is for time on that. And that, that would get back to kind of your question on the, if we're going to rework the whole downtown area, what would that cost? And so, I mean, there'll definitely be an improvement. An example I used in the previous presentation was our current level of service. You know, it was 18 months to fix a sinkhole in the backyard because of the staffing, the budget cycle, and, and things of that nature. And then, you know, we had to get a specialty contract in place and all that. So that, so there's a hole in somebody's backyard for 18 months. This would eliminate that.
Okay, okay. And thank you, George. I feel like you and I've traveled this long path together for, for years. And I know it's been longer for you.
It, it is, and we understand. It's a tough question.
Yeah.
We, we understand that. And we also understand that, you know, just, you know, those pictures that I showed in the beginning, that's what I see day in and day out. But so, like I pointed out before, I have a hard time communicating that. And so that's why there's, you know, a lot of the feedback we're getting is very helpful, because it's like, okay, how do we, how do we tell our story?
Yeah. Well, and I think, and I think all the comments about education are very, very fair, because there are parts of town that don't flood, and there are parts of town that flood a lot. But I also think what we're going to learn is that it's kind of a dirty little secret. And we kind of know that somewhat, because there are people all over town who have flooding issues and will contact us and say, my house flooded over the weekend, what are you all going to do about it? And when you say, well, I need you to fill out a form for the city, they go, no, I don't want to tell anybody that my house floods. I mean, I can't even tell you how many people do that. So I think we're going to find out that we may have more residential flooding than we even realize. And Mayor, if you don't mind, to address Councilmember Hodges on why hasn't anything been done before this, it's because of the previous councils, and they didn't want to move this forward. And it's taken a really long time for us to get here, longer than I've been here. And so I'm not putting blame on staff or blame on previous council, because it's all about priorities. But it's just whether or not this council wants to prioritize stormwater at this point in time, I think. So, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Level.
Thanks, Mayor. Gosh, I, you know, just kind of sitting through all this, I think the most compelling argument or point that's been made here was Councilmember Shields, and it's, this doesn't solve stormwater. It says stormwater. It has that appearance that it solves stormwater. And it, it's, to use a bad analogy, it's like something, a bill Congress would put forward. It's like stormwater bill, and here's the money that we're, we're going to collect to fund salary of a critical function of our city government. And so I'm sitting here thinking, you want to, if we wanted to do a tax of some sort, set it aside for the actual capital improvements that need to be done, that actually fix the stormwater. And let's go back to our $260 million budget, and let's fund the critical functions that we need in our city government to give them the people they need to address these issues versus going to the taxpayer under this guise that we're doing something, and we're not. We're really hiring people to assess the problem, which we know exists. And I'm saying, why can't we find the money to do that in our budget? Why can't we give you guys the people and the resources you need to do your job, and then come up with some sort of solution here that actually funds the, you know, I would, I would feel much better going to the taxpayer and say, we're going to collect some of this money, but it's actually going to go to fix the problem. So it just is, you know, I, I, I appreciate all that the city does, and I know that there's issues here. I mean, we've got some issues in New Longview just with some of the stormwater and the drain in our lakes. And so I, I think that's a critical function of it. But, but the key here is that it doesn't fix it. It is, it is, it's adding staff and personnel to a critical function of our city government, and that needs to come from our, our general operating budget, in my opinion. If there's a way to do this as a utility, again, that sets money aside to actually fix problems, I think that's, that's a reasonable thing to go to our citizens and ask for, if that helps, right? But anyway, I just, it's, it's, I love the discourse. I love everything that's been, been said here tonight. And it's just kind of where I'm thinking from a representative of my constituents and what we would go to them and ask them for, and what they would actually get out of it. I would be more in favor of our, us figuring out a way to fund the right people that you need to do the job that you need to do, than go and ask for a tax to, to create those jobs. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Felker.
Thank you, Mayor. I think this is a tough question. And so I just, coming back to this idea of what the history is, I know I've seen a presentation on that, and I think that's helpful to at least see the, what's the start and the finish from where we were? What councils dealt with this in the past and how? Because I know there have been some fits and starts. That's just helpful perspective. I mean, again, I don't, doesn't mean something shouldn't have been done previously, but I think that is helpful to know what efforts have been made. I, I have to say that I was looking ahead to the agenda further along, and I wrote down, I wrote down fund balance, because that's something we'll probably talk about with the budget later on. And so I, there is that challenge, and I think, I think the sentiment, at least that Councilmember Level's sharing is something that I can appreciate. And it maybe goes back to my question about the water utility and knowing, you know, how does that function? But again, you articulated that capital projects in that case come from largely the water TAP fee, right?
The combination of their monthly, their user fees, which is the monthly billing, that's their water and sewer construction funds. And then the TAP fee is what's assessed on new development for the increase or impacts to the system.
Which is a one-time fee.
The one-time fee, and that's generally allocated for expansions to the water and sewer system.
Yeah, okay. Not necessarily replacing existing water mains?
The, like, the water main program, where they're replacing existing water mains, that comes out of their, and their user fees.
Okay, okay.
Mark Schoffler, Director of Water Utilities. So in water utilities, you have the rates that you're talking about, then you have connection fees. Those are our main sources of income. So both fund capital improvements. The rates will fund largely maintenance and replacement of existing infrastructure. Connection fees fund projects that are related to growth and development or infrastructure you need for growth and development capacity. You know, if you need to build a new water tower, for example, to, because you need additional storage to support the development of the community, that would largely come, if not wholly come, from connection fees.
Tap fee, connection fee, same thing, right?
Right. So there's a blending of that. Those, those costs are all projected, you know, based upon capital improvement needs and anticipated maintenance costs that you have over the next five years. Those are revisited every year through a process, and then you run that through a model. You estimate what your rates are going to need to be, your cost recovery, your revenue requirement's going to be. You factor that in and build through that every year.
Okay. And, yeah, so again, I'm just, I'm wrestling with the sentiments that are being shared, the idea that utility, how it's, you know, trying to, are we apples to apples? And I know there's, they're different. They serve a different function. Anyway, I'm, I'm just going to reserve my thoughts for now. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. All right. Let me help summarize then. So, Mr. Binger, you've educated us, just like you have your committee. With regard to, you can, you can hear, there's some takeaways, for sure. There isn't consensus up here for taking it through the county at this point. I don't, I don't see that. If, if we were to even put this in front of the voters, but the question becomes, you know, do you put it in front of the voters to start working on a funding source? Because if, if, if we'd had this in place 10 years ago, we would have, we'd have 50 million that we would have brought in over the last, you know, 10 years or, or more. So do we start that process now, or do we, given the climate right now with the, you know, what, what everybody's mentioned, the taxes, the inflation and everything else that's gone up, do you, do we punt this and handle it in-house like, like councilmembers are saying? We should just take care of it on our own. It's, it's one thing to say, take care of it on our own. That would be, we would have to, it's an annual thing. It's not a one-time thing we're talking about. So we can figure that out, but if we're going to have future conversations, we got to, we got to focus it all around that, and we got to talk about best practices and the impact. You know, we got to simplify this, because I think we understand the issues right now. And I'm not sure, I'll, I'll just have to talk to Mr. Dunning if we even bring this back to council, unless I, unless you all want to have another discussion. Because we all see there's a need, but I don't want to go through another night like this unless we have direction. So we're going to need, we need to see best practices. What are other cities doing? What would that mean over a 10-year period? What would, you know, what is it? We, as a council, then need to kind of take this information and discuss, do we do this now as a funding source? Because this is, or do we punt this and continue as we are, like playing catch-up? Yes, but we are in a better position than we've been in the past. So, does that make sense, Mr. Dunning? Go ahead, sir.
Yeah, maybe I could, a little bit of history to this. I just pulled up, I was part of the 2003 or '04 Stormwater Task Force. So this has been since Clearback then. And I pulled up the report, and then it was a task force recommending just what we've done. Let's allocate a little bit of our capital towards stormwater, numerous bullet points. But one of the recommendations was, is to recommend that a stormwater utility be established using a stormwater fee, a dedicated, permanent funding source based on the impervious surface. So we're, we're kind of following that, those recommendations of that task force 20 years ago. None of you were part of that. I know that. I don't know how many of you may, Councilmember Demore, I know you were involved in finally getting to a point to fund this work, which was a pretty significant cost. So it's been years that this, this topic has been discussed. And I, I feel like we owe that to you, to tell you a little bit of that history of what has led us to this point, because you're getting hit fresh with it this evening with this body of work, but you really don't know all the history that came with that and what we've been through over a number of years, over, well, about 20 years' worth of work here. So feels like we need to have a little bit more time to help you understand what all we've been through, where we've come from. That's, that may be helpful, it may, it may not. But I can tell you that, just having been part of that, it is trying to find a way to put a, a sustainable revenue source in place so that we, we don't continue to... to put a sustainable revenue source in place, so that we, we don't continue to, I'll say, pretend that these things aren't going to need some work at some point in time, because they will. We know that. We absolutely know that they will. Pipes in the ground are going to need some work, and it's not just our pipes. This report refers to all of these private stormwater controls, such as detention basins, retention basins, putting in programs to make sure that they're still functioning as they, they should, because at the end of the day, stormwater, all of, all of us that own property play a part in that system. And there's not a clear dividing line between, oh, that's private, that's public, because it all goes together. And so it's really a comprehensive approach here that's, that's being looked at. But, but what's led us here to this presentation, there's a lot of depth to that, that goes into that. So, I thought, thank you, Mayor, for letting me share that.
No, that's good. I, I think we, I think we know what we need to talk about going forward, and what you need to bring forward to us, and we need to talk about, you know, if we don't do this, then what are we doing as a city? And, but we need to do, if we're going to do all that, we're going to have to do it really quickly, because if you want to let the voters decide whether or not they want to, they want to have a funding source for stormwater utilities, then we'll have to, we will have to make that decision. So, we don't meet for a few weeks after tonight, but, so, not, not that that's a big deal. We've got three meetings in July, I believe. So, we'll, we'll come back. I'll go through Mr. Dunning and, and see what we can schedule. All right? All right, let's take a break. Let's come back at a quarter till, so that's 11 minutes. 11-minute recess.
Okay, welcome back everyone. We're bringing this meeting back to order. I'm sorry it was a little bit longer break than I said, but we needed it so that we could be fresh for this next presentation. This is not a public hearing. This is actually a presentation. Conceptual Economic Development Incentive Request, Chapter 100 Incentives for the Greens at Woods Chapel Residential Project. Andy Mackey and Brian Mertz are the applicants and, but it looks like first we have Mr. Elam here to intro.
Yeah, thank you very much Mayor, members of the council. Thank you. Thank you for your attention this evening. I know it's been a bit of a long evening right now, so we're gonna try to continue to move forward with these as quickly as possible. Again, I'm Ryan Elam. I'm the Assistant City Manager here. What I've got before you is our handy economic development incentive policy flow chart. We felt that this would be a good thing to throw up on the screen right now and talk through briefly, just so we kind of know where we're at in the process of how we analyze and review incentive requests. And overall, tonight is a pretty good night to look at this incentive chart because we actually had four projects total on here in three different phases of this chart. Earlier today, you had the public hearing for the LCRA, which is all the way over here in the applicant presents the development redevelopment plan to city council for formal consideration. And then we'll move on to the implementation phase for another project later on the agenda this evening, which has the contract. So as they're moving through this process, the next two projects, and this is applicable for both projects, both presentations coming up, fall right here in this, this area on the chart here. And that is the conceptual presentation. And again, the goal of the conceptual presentation is to gain feedback from the city council on the general concept of providing an incentive for that specific project. The numbers are not finalized. The project itself may not be finalized. There may be options to consider and what the objective is, is again to seek feedback from the council to know whether to move further forward, whether to make adjustments, what adjustments to make prior to preparing the formal documents for formal consideration. Or depending upon the feedback, this box here is really the next step, whereas the applicant determines whether to continue forward with the process or not. So just wanted to frame that up real quick. We're in the conceptual incentive request for the next two presentations. And with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Kurt Peterson.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, Council, good evening. Kurt Peterson with Polsonelli. Really glad to be here tonight. Right out of the gate, I just want to say I do acknowledge what time it is. So it's that threading the needle, and I mean it, that we have a lot of information because we've worked on this for months and months, and this is a huge moment for a project. But at the same time, you have my promise, we'll be efficient here as we move forward. We'll dive right in as we know that you have had a lot on your agenda tonight. So we always start with giving you a sense that it won't be a man during presentation because there's an outline. There's a way we want to proceed. We'll quickly talk about who is this proposed public-private partner, the developer. We'll talk about the proposed project and very specifically, I don't usually add this level of detail this early, but know what's coming here. We have a challenge for quality and attainability. How do you get both those in housing in Lee's Summit? Then we have two strategies we want to present to do that, SLA. I'll of course tell you what that is for those that haven't heard. And then also this smart green approach. So two different strategies. And then ultimately remind you several times that all these strategies are about ultimately getting more affordable housing here in Lee's Summit. We'll talk about the specific proposed incentive. That is the subject of this conceptual presentation. And lastly, talk about why, why this is compelling for the city, we think, and that's for you to ultimately decide. So diving right in. The proposed developer I have sitting behind me, I have Andy Mackey and Brian Mertz. Hopefully both of you have had the chance to meet both of them. They really have really a proven track record in Kansas City for resident, as residential and even beyond that developers. Across the spectrum from townhomes to single-family residential to multifamily, these guys have proven that they are really excellent. Just a few sample projects in about 30 seconds. One is Sunset Plaza. This is in Raymore. It's right by Raymore City Hall. It's a very high-end townhome project. We have a personal favorite of mine. This is Thrive at Creekside. If you guys have seen this project in Parkville, it is super, super impressive as far as projects go. We're talking 460-plus units of apartments, townhomes and apartments over commercial. Plus, my favorite is a baseball coach. It has an amazing turf baseball complex that is really a market-leading right now. That is Thrive at Creekside. And then lastly, I would just wanted to point out one more example. Brighton Crossing, this is at 152 in Brighton in Kansas City, Missouri. It's a mix of high-quality, highly amenitized townhomes and apartments. So the bottom line there with all that quickly is you have a, well, Mayor always points this out to steal a little bit of your tagline. One of your key points on projects is, I need quality developers come to the city. So the overall there and that quick run-through was that you have a proven, high-quality residential developer here that wants to propose this project. Next, let's look at the project site. So on the screen, get your bearings. This is about 18 acres, kind of elongated north-south that starts in the, is, that is in the southwest quadrant of Woods Chapel. That's at the top of your screen, running east-west. And then you have, of course, 470. So it's this area. You go over to the right side, you can see as it meanders its way down, you can see the specific contours of the, of the 18 acres. So first, really fast, you're thinking, man, I think I've seen this site before. I think we've done something on the site before. You have. This was a property that was in front of the council previously, but, and there was, there was an approved apartment project here on this very dirt. In fact, Phase 1 even started grading. Without getting into the details, many of you know there was litigation that stopped this project in its tracks. Construction contract was terminated. Construction was demobilized. Everything was pulled off the site. The site was re-grasped. Seed was put down. It's back to its natural state again. There was a full stop. The project was terminated, was killed. Fortunately, the project before you tonight, while on the same dirt, is really, I'd call it a phoenix rising out of the ashes. It's a different project. And while we still are proposing apartments, you'll see it needs a revised project plan to go through the system. It needs all-new permits, new construction contract, everything about it is new. I'm pausing here saying, well, this is interesting. Why are you saying at this, at the beginning of the presentation? It's because at the outset, I want to make sure everybody's informed on the facts and can look at the policy that we have in Lee's Summit, which is what? We get our incentives approved and then we pull permits. It's as simple as that. I hope you see here, this is a brand-new project. This is totally different. And it's something that I think doesn't at all go against the spirit of the policy. I don't think it violates it. And of course, we can talk about it more if you need to. But at the outset, I wanted you to understand, same dirt, different project, getting incentives, and then we'll move forward with the new project plan approvals and permits. So kind of the thesis here starts with understanding that there's a, we believe, and I think many of you believe, there's a challenge in Lee's Summit. It's not just a Lee's Summit problem. It's not unique to this city, but it is a problem. It, the problem is finding a way to marry up and thread the needle between affordability of housing, specifically apartments, and quality. And so by looking at the numbers on the screen, I think all of you would agree, and I won't go through each number, but you'll see as you glance your eyes over it, and you've seen it probably in the packet, that housing is super expensive. I don't care if you're talking apartments or townhomes or single-family. It's really expensive in Lee's Summit. Again, not picking on Lee's Summit. This is across the metro, across the country, really. So this is the challenge that we're setting out to start to take on with this project. So I said there's two strategies, right? Let's go to the first strategy. The first strategy is SLA, which is a catchy acronym, right, to really hammer home the point of this strategy, which is smaller, livable, and more attainable. Now, at the outset, I have to say this because it could have cognitive dissonance as we go on. It's a weight, high-quality, more attainable. It's really important that you don't, your brain doesn't go to, wait, this isn't solving a problem of attainability. When we talk about attainability or affordability, we use those interchangeably, right? And there's a major problem across our country and here. Sometimes we're talking about lower-income renters and lower-income, folks with lower incomes, right? And that may have low-income housing, tax credits, and other strategies that we were to address that. That's absolutely not what we're talking about here. We're talking about trying to have high quality and something that's more affordable. And that's what I'm going to lay out as really our strategy here. But I wanted to say that at the outset. So the average multifamily, Class A multifamily unit in Lee's Summit right now is plus or minus 1181 square feet, 1,181 square feet. The higher the square footage, of course, in luxury multifamily, the more rent, right, rent per square foot. The big idea behind SLA is high-quality but smaller. So quickly, this got, this is small on this screen, but you kind of let, take 10 seconds and stare at these because this is a, is a visual to help drive home the point. You know, what's the difference? Doesn't seem like much, right? You just glance at it. It's a floor plan for a nice multifamily unit. Well, if, if we were to take more time and really dig into it, what you would start to notice is there's about 100 less square feet. And it's very subtle. Somebody that lives there doesn't really, their life doesn't change, right, because they're missing 100 square feet. Where did this strategy take it from? It took it from the dining area. Instead of having a separate dining area with a dining table right here, you got rid of that. Well, most people don't actually sit at the dining table in the dining area anyway, right? So you don't miss it. The point is you find a way to take high quality and get rid of 100 square feet, and it actually starts to matter. So it's just an example. Two more exercises. You look at the screen, you see what? Two nice kitchens, right? On the left, that the developer has developed that very product nearby outside this city, very nice kitchen, right? You look on the right of your screen, that's a very nice kitchen in a project that's here in Lee's Summit that's fairly new. And you know, what, what do you think the difference is? The difference is that the project on the right, the kitchen, belongs to a project that is much bigger per unit and is way more expensive, right? But it, you can see right here, you get the same high-quality kitchen in both projects. Again, same idea. On the left, something this developer's built outside this city. It's a bedroom, looks normal. On the right, forget the furnishings, right? That's not the point. But the finish, the windows, the, you can see the quality of the doors and the hardware. You think, man, they look pretty similar, right? By having an overall smaller unit and being strategic but keeping high quality, it's a dramatically different total rent that you pay than those two. So the point here is that you can achieve high quality in multifamily units in a community with strategically smaller units and not negatively impact that resident experience. It can be done, and that's what we're setting out to do here with SLA. So we look at rent savings with an SLA. So our average square footage of a unit in the project proposed to you, which I didn't even give you the name, it was on the cover, but the Greens, right? The Greens at Woods Chapel. The Greens' average square footage, it only has one and two bedroom units, given the target audience here, is 885 square feet. Plus or minus, right? We're still going, like I said, we need new plans to the city and all that. But about 885 square feet. So like, take the one-bedroom, just to give you a sense, there'll be a one-bedroom that's in the range of 650 square feet. So the two immediate residential rental products in that submarket right around, you can see it on the screen right there. You have an apartment project, that's the Fairways Apartments, great apartments, and you have townhomes right there, Chapel Ridge Townhomes. And you can see the difference in the size on the screen. Fairways Apartments, these are all averages, right? There's different unit types, but over 1,000 square feet, and Chapel Ridge, over 1,300 square feet. So when you compare the average unit size of the apartments there, just right next door, people are trying to, where do I go? Where do I live? They, there would be a savings. There's some assumptions here we can unpack, but remember my expedient, you know, my efficiency was speaking here. When you hold the rent constant between the two, you're talking about approximately $200 per unit per month. And when you take the average of the townhome size and the apartment size, just to give another kind of flexibility in range, you get over $400 a unit. So the point is, we can keep the quality. We can strategically reduce the size and create serious savings for somebody each month by choosing the Greens. It gives them another option. With SLA. So then comes to your brain, what? Did, is this something this developer just dreamed up? Why doesn't this happen more often? This doesn't seem like rocket science, right? Well, it's not rocket science, but we don't see it more often for this reason, really two reasons, two primary reasons. The first is, when you close your eyes and think about an apartment, you know what's the most expensive, right? The most expensive is gonna be the kitchen and probably the bathroom, right, depending on the apartment. That's, that's the most intense materials and labor and all that. The cheapest part is just adding size to the closet in the, in the, in the living room and all of that, right? Well, this, the Greens is gonna have the same kitchen, right? We just kind of looked at that. It's gonna have the same quality, generally the same size. It's gonna have similar bathroom, right? Same, same high quality. So by having a smaller unit and less square footage to charge rent over, right? You're gonna get less rent. Well, that's our point. But wait a second. If you were looking to maximize profit, what would you do? You would do what the market does in Lee's Summit and elsewhere, which is you make bigger units and you put into those cheaper additional square footage because you get the same rent per foot as you increase the square footage, if that makes sense, right? Less marginal cost, same marginal revenue. This is, this is going against sort of real estate 101. So that's the first reason no one's come up and described this sort of project to you as SLA. The second is bigger is better marketing. We all fall for it, right? For almost every product, we, even, we're not in Texas, right, but it's still like, bigger's better, and that, that's, that's real. And that gets marketed, and so most developers flock to that. So this developer wants to lead in making SLA happen. So SLA, that I've kind of raced through, but we've spent months, you know, focusing on this and how to pull this off, is one of two strategies where we're battling sort of the affordability, right? Make high-quality more affordable. The second strategy we've called Smart Green. So Andy was gonna come up. Andy specifically and the developer team has spent some significant time with our engineers and everything trying to come up with this. You're gonna watch me go through this fast. That probably upsets Andy. And Andy was gonna come up and talk about it, but Andy's smart and knows that we need to go pretty quickly, and you will ask us questions if you have detailed questions. So that's my apology to poor Andy that it was ready to give you a boatload on this. You have slides here that we'll go through quickly that you probably had a chance to study. So we will do a high-level review of it. But remember, this is the second strategy that we're bringing to you tonight with this Greens project. So there's three pieces, three pieces you'll hear quickly to the Green strategy, Smart Green. One is focusing on no-cost electric vehicle charging. People can have no additional cost to live there and be able to charge their electric vehicles. Second is having some E-units that have a flat, very low electric bill, regardless of usage. That's well below market. And third is rainwater capture for irrigation. So the little icon you see at the bottom there, a little table, is something we pulled out that we found online that simply says, usually when we're talking about green, LEED accreditation, which I'm a LEED AP, that's very good. I'm not speaking publicly against LEED. I'm just saying, usually what that's telling developers, look, if you could do something like LEED, look, look closely at it. You can command higher rents. You can acquire premium pricing. That's okay. I mean, that's, it's capitalism, right? And there's people looking for that. I'll pay more. That's not what we're doing here. It's the exact opposite, which is why we put that there. Everything on Smart Green that we're talking about is meant to lower the overall cost of living for the resident. Okay, first of three there, EV charging. What this slide is telling you is that, as you What this slide is telling you is that, as you know, because you read and you watch the news and you look on your street, EV adoption is, what's the word in asymptote? Can I say asymptotic? I think I made that up, but you know what I mean? The curve is going crazy and it's going to continue to do that. That's a twenty twenty to twenty thirty. Look at the international adoption of EVs. But go closer to home, on the right there, it's Missouri, just from two thousand twenty-one to two thousand twenty-two, there was a fifty percent increase in electric vehicle driving in Missouri. It's, it's going to go crazy. So that's kind of the premise here on this first. Everybody's getting an EV charger, even people that want to live, live at a nice SLA apartment, right? So here's the big idea from the developer on this. It's initially in phase one, try to put in twenty-seven EV charging stations in the covered garage areas that can be rented as compared to, again, not even going to say the project because we, there's great apartment projects in Lee Summit, but a new one of the leading, one of the leading ones has four. That's pretty typical and they charge you for them. You have to pay every time you charge. It's an, it's an additional cost to the resident. So the idea here is find a way to put enough solar on some of the roofs and other areas to be able to charge forty to seven miles per day of a residence EV at no additional cost to the resident. So what did I have there? I had solar and I had a bunch of EV charging stations put inside garage units. So that's the first of three that make up Smart Green. And this slide, we could go through the assumptions, but what it's telling you is somebody saves a ton of money. If they come in with their EV and they get free charging, that's the bottom green number, right? That's an estimate based on various assumptions. That's per month. If somebody says, man, finally I, I'm an apartment liver, that's what I do, rent by choice. I've never been able to have an EV because I have to drive to Walmart and charge overnight and walk back because there's nowhere to charge my EV. Now I have, now, now, or sorry, I want to do that, but I don't want to drive to Walmart. So I'm going to go ahead and get an EV now because I can live in an apartment and actually have affordable and trusted charging. That's a conversion to an EV. That's an even higher number. So that's what that slide is doing. Big savings to people that drive EVs. Second of three, Smart Green. This is an E-unit. Here, here's the big idea here. Go back to solar, just like before. This is based on the concept of putting sufficient solar in the project to power thirty-six units is what the engineers have said could be possible. To create E-units, that's our made up phrase, E-unit, for somebody that lives in this unit, instead of having an evergreen bill, like a homeowner or an apartment renter gets every month, you simply write a check, we're, this is a ballpark number for twenty-five dollars flat per month to the landlord, right? You never interact with evergreen. Why? Because we're generating enough solar and that have to buy that, we'd have the batteries all there that can take the juice and give it to those units so that they have a very, very low electric bill. So that would be what we would call an E, E-unit. Lastly, this is self-explanatory. You've seen this, we're still playing around with, a lot of things depend on if we can pull this off, but capturing all that water that just goes into the, into the ground and is wasted and using it to irrigate some of the beds and things like that. That's a general map. We're looking at possible places to take rooftop rainwater and do that. So that's the third part of Smart Green. Three pieces that go into the overall strategy, number two, of lowering the cost to residents, cost of living, of living in a really nice apartment. I'm not going to go through all these numbers, but what we were trying to do is show sensitivity to you to give you a sense from how much savings can happen, could happen for residents from Smart Green, very, based on whether they drive an EV or convert to an EV, whether they're an E-unit or not. So it's really can be big money. But now let's put them back together. We had two strategies, right? Two items you're focusing on tonight with this project that make it, you know, extraordinary, unique. One is SLA, one is Smart Green. When you put those together and Community X would be effectively the community I identified before, that's right next door. People are choosing where to live, right? In that submarket. You can see that Community X would be at that approximately one thousand five hundred twenty-three dollars a month. When you take into account SLA, that would bring it down to, given our smaller unit size, right? Strategically smaller, but the same high quality, one thousand three hundred and twenty-seven. So you immediately have several hundred dollars in savings, which if you look down in yellow, doing the math, it's just doing the arithmetic. You come up with almost twenty-four hundred dollars a year just on that alone, period, in reducing people's cost of living. Then if you put in a Smart Green down here, there's some assumptions made on whether you are converting to an EV and also here's the cost of not having to pay for charging your EV at night, you get that higher end of the range. So overall, again, two strategies with an example of the kind of savings we can have residents experience and really bring down their cost of living and make living here more affordable, but still have high quality. Okay, this brings us to the next, the third of four pieces of this presentation. This is what are you proposing in terms of public incentives? There's one public incentives tool proposed tonight. That's it. It's chapter one hundred. And the first of the two pieces, you've heard, you know this well, is predictable taxes. The second will be sales tax exemption on construction materials. So first on predictable taxes, as you know, I, I've listened to you, I know you all internalize this. Having predictable property taxes that are reasonable for a project of this size and cost, which is enormous, tens and tens and tens of millions of dollars, is absolutely essential, which is why I'm slowing down. Essential to get financing and to get your project off the ground. As David Busek, I imagine, is going to present after me and bring to your attention. You see the little blurb from the newspaper in the upper right of this slide here. Again, for the really the third to your cycle, right? You're seeing ma, not, not a little bit, right? Ah, shucks, we got hit with a six percent increase right on our, on our project. Thirty-five percent again, on, on, on general, specifically apartment projects, let alone other clients with, in other sectors. It's massive, it's unpredictable and it's really destabilizing, especially when you're trying to get a project off the ground. It's a really big deal. So the proposed pilot to get certainty here is as follows, because I just made the case that I think I don't really need to make much case for. You guys get the first point, but that doesn't tell you what the pilot should be. What should the predictable taxes be? Here's what we did. We started with one thousand eight hundred dollars per unit, because that's the best history we have, most recent history we have. There was two projects, you'll recall, big, high-end luxury apartment projects that this council approved, chapter one hundred for in December, January, right about six months ago. And the pilot for both was identical as one thousand eight hundred dollars per unit with inflation, you know, over the course of the ten years. So that's the number we started with. And then we made two adjustments that tracked the two strategies I just talked about. First, we took the square foot, average square footage of the units at the Greens, which is eight hundred and eighty-five. You can see that on the screen there and we divided that into the competing project in the submarket, which is kind of indicative of the size in the submarket of ten fifteen. And what that does is it, that's a thirteen percent reduction and because it makes sense, right? Appraised value for commercial property like this, we call it commerce, it's residential, but it's rental, is all based on income, right? So if you reduce the size of the unit by thirteen percent, that reduces your income by the same approximate amount. If it decreases your income, it should on an income approach, just appraisal science, should reduce the appraised value. So that's exactly what we did, no more, no less, thirteen percent. The result is one thousand, as you see on the screen, one thousand five hundred sixty-six dollars a unit, based on that smaller unit size than those other two projects. So that's an independent move right there, one thousand five sixty-six. The second move tracks the second strategy, which is Smart Green. So Smart Green will, if implemented, will cost a lot of money. It's what we're working on right now. They figure out for all that solar specifically and the charging stations, et cetera. So this project, which I neglected to specifically identify, would have two phases with three hundred and ninety-six units. So if you take this additional reduction on the screen that you see of two hundred and sixteen dollars a unit, so you're down to fifteen sixty-six, to be really clear. If you reduce it another two hundred and sixteen dollars, that comes to a flat thirteen fifty per unit. That two hundred and sixteen dollars a unit per year for Smart Green, times three hundred and ninety-six is eighty-five thousand dollars. And this is a ten-year program, so you multiply it by ten years, plus you have the inflation, let's call it about, and it is about a million dollars. There would be way more costs for the developer on Smart Green. If we all find it compelling, maybe we don't. But if we find it compelling, way more than a million dollars. So this, the whole idea is this is meant to help that. It certainly doesn't wipe out that additional cost. So back to what is the right pilot for this project? If SLA is the only thing we're looking at, right? Only strategy, one thousand five hundred sixty-six. If it's SLA plus Smart Green as presented, one thousand three hundred and fifty is the pilot that would be proposed. So as we hear your feedback tonight on this question, I'll admit that the solar aspect of Smart Green, which underpins the Smart Green approach, is becoming increasingly challenging. Even I think three days ago, we got more numbers from our engineer. It's, it, it may not even work. It may not, this is cutting edge for this developer. It may not even work. But if we're fortunate enough to have support coming out of this meeting that causes us to spend more money and more time to move forward with this project, I would hope, if you feel comfortable with it, you'd say, look, if you do SLA, you know, unofficially, but we could see being in that range of fifteen sixty-six for the pilot as presented. If you can figure out a way to pull off SLA plus Smart Green, yeah, work with staff and maybe we could get in the thirteen fifty range. So it's kind of an optionality. We want to hear feedback on both. Just to be clear, maybe you hate Smart Green. I'm not trying to lead you there. If you hate that, say that, right? And maybe we just go to SLA. Two independent, you know, layering effects here with two different pilot numbers. Okay, sales tax exemption. Why? It's, it's part of chapter one hundred, but we, there still needs to be a justification, right? So this obviously takes away Missouri sales and use tax on all the construction, all the sales tax on construction materials for this really expensive project. So first, the benefit there is it helps reduce the construction cost to make SLA more viable. Remember how I talked about the marginal cost, right? Idea, we have all the heavy cost and not the cheap cost, if you know what I mean, of adding extra space in the living room or whatever, but we still get less rent, right? Because we're smaller. This helps make up some of that gap, not all of it. Also, it helps with whether we do all of Smart Green or just some EV chargers, it helps to pay for some of that. It also helps with our extraordinary costs on this project, which range from significant rock removal at this site to, you remember, a former golf course, right? We have significant, we could get into the weeds if we want to at some point, the rough, and talk about some of the things that have to be dug up from the week, I, I won't get into it. We can get in that if you're interested tonight or later, but there are significant costs associated with removing the infrastructure, infrastructure that was there for the golf course. So the idea of extraordinary costs there also exists for that reason. And so sales tax exemption would be really helpful. Like usual, it's something that is very valuable that you provide as a city, but it doesn't hit the city's pocket, but it's leveraged, if you know what I mean. It's, it's an efficient way for the city to help. This is the table you've seen many a time. The total assistance for the project is in yellow at the top. The sales and use tax for Lee Summit, kind of their, the city's contribution to that would be the middle number. And then as a percentage, you see Lee Summit's percentage of that overall benefit is about twenty-four percent, twenty-five percent. So here's where we end, the last point, right? Always end with this, because if you don't find this compelling for the citizens, taxpayers of Lee Summit, then you don't support it, right? You send us home. So here's our, humbly, here's our view on why this is compelling for the constituents of this, of your constituents. First, we always look and see, is this a place where the city's economic development policy said, look here first, right? Come here with tools for great projects and we want to highlight these areas. It is, it's in the I-470 North targeted planning area, as indicated there by the red arrow. Secondly, as you look at Ignite, you see in a number of places in the conference of plan where it talks about provide diverse housing options. Now that means a lot of things. We're not coming in and like solving that phrase, but we are, hopefully you see with SLA and perhaps Smart Green, but certainly with SLA, trying to really provide a different option, same quality, but get the price down some to make it more affordable for others that might otherwise have to choose a different option. Third is, and I always think this is being a financial guy, this is really, really important, which is, okay, during this ten-year period, what does this look like financially if you agree with the proposed pilot? And by the way, we ran these numbers on the thirteen fifty, because obviously if you got comfortable with that, you're comfortable with ultimately if it's a higher number, right? So that's what these numbers reflect. So the current taxes are non-existent. That's the top line. I mean, there's effectively nothing being paid on all that ground. During the tenured proposed chapter one hundred period, real property taxes, the city would get upwards of a million dollars, let alone, again, after the ten-year period. And always put the school district because we care and we always meet with the school district. So you can see it's a very large number during the ten-year period for the school district. Also, of course, excise taxes to the city would accrue for this, you know, expensive project. So the last is, I call it, we call it economic and social. Again, what, why is this compelling, hopefully to you, this SLA project? We call it, we were trying to decide what to call it, but it's the young adult drain. And I know that some, there's been some one-on-one interactions with people at the dais. There's been interactions with people and our families, others in the community, which is, here's a big problem that SLA is really trying to solve for. And I say solve, again, one project is not going to do it. How about this? It's trying to chip away at, at a problem. And the problem is this, people go away in our families to, to college perhaps, right? And they say, hey, I gotta get a job now and mom and dad want him to come home to Lee Summit. I think I'll tell you something about this next generation. My kids are just getting, you know, upwards closer to that range. They want quality, by the way. We, we lived in apartments, I'm sorry, most of us, that were not super quality. They want quality from the get-go, but the problem is even as young professionals, they can't always find units that they can afford when they're trying to rent right out of the gate. So really a primary, a main, maybe even primary focus here is find something that has the quality, make it smaller. They don't need that extra space. They don't need the extra two hundred to three hundred and fifty square feet. Get it more in their price range and help, again, back to the slide, fight the young adult drain. Get some of them home that can actually live in Lee Summit. They want to do it. They just want quality and they need to be able to afford it. And as you see, I won't read each of the subbullets, but it's all real, right? These are the people that's, start small businesses. These are the people that have the lifeblood that gets the city going for the next generation. We need them here. SLA, we really think will start to chip away at that problem. And then finishing, we think essential workers, frankly, we think this starts to get closer for some essential workers. Are they going to start to afford the quality that they want and they deserve? And then also just value-focused renters by choice. There's people that choose not to live here that could pay for, fill in the name of the project, because there's great projects here. But they're like, no, I, you know, I'm, I'm value-focused and they go somewhere else. But when you chop off again, another, whatever it ends up being from two to four thousand dollars a year, that can start to make the difference. So altogether, economic and social benefits flowing from SLA, we believe, are real. So in conclusion, again, we want to nibble and chip and work away at the affordability, quality conundrum that this community and a lot of communities face with multifamily. We'd ask for your support to go figure out which option makes the most sense. SLA, one thousand five hundred sixty-six dollars, based on that proportionate reduction in size. Or SLA plus Smart Green, if we can figure it out over the next, you know, we usually come back within six to eight weeks. Maybe we can figure it out and that would be one thousand three hundred and fifty. We'd like feedback on, on, on those tonight. And whichever way we go, I can tell you this, we strongly, strongly believe, and I hope you're seeing the same thing, that it will be a fun, this project, the woods, structured this way, would be a financial, but also a social benefit to the city. And make this us, and, and really, we just ask for your support to help make this SLA community come out of the ground. And like always, we'd love to answer your questions, mayor and, and council.
All right. Thank you, sir. David Busek, Chief Counsel of Economic Development and Planning. I will also attempt to be as brief as possible so we can get to the discussion points. I know you're familiar with this type of analysis, so I'll just hit on some of the key facts and I'll try to stay as factual as possible because I know we'll get into some of the discussion with your, with your questions, I would anticipate. We start with some unique facts associated with this project, which the, you, you just heard about. Zoning has previously been approved for this project. This project has received building permits for multiple structures, site development permits have been issued, some site work has commenced. Want to make sure that you're aware of that. And then the developer made the decision to, business decision to stop moving forward with this project and they've restructured as this project you're seeing tonight. So I just wanted to be clear that there has been some construction, have been building permits issued on the previous iteration of this project. And then the second thing is, there's obviously some very unique features associated with this project and that was the, a, a good portion of the presentation you just saw with the, the special, I'll just categorize it as the special features associated with this project that is part of the justification for the, the incentive request. And so I'll get to some of the facts and some of the data here. So we start with the quick analysis of the developer's incentive request, just to bring you back to what precisely this request is. Sales and use tax exemption on construction materials during the construction period. And then for a ten-year period abatement, and now this is my calculation, in the amount of forty-six percent. And I'll give a quick explanation of where that comes from and then I'll have a little more data in just a moment. I will refer to, at this point, moving forward, what we would call the ninety percent valuation rule. We had extensive discussions about previous projects that came to the city council. We had one project back in twenty twenty-one and twenty-two that had, that went through three rounds of this conceptual presentation in front of the city council. That led us to talk with the county directly about how we should go about conducting this analysis when a project like this is presented to us. The county said they, they use the net operating income. The county said they, they use the net operating income valuation approach for apartment projects, but if you're doing a valuation based on construction costs, they would target ninety percent of total project costs. So when I talk about that ninety percent rule, that's the county telling us that you should take a look at the total cost of a project and use ninety percent of those project costs for valuation purposes. So that's what leads to this number here. And there's another set of spreadsheets that I've calculated to get to this number, which is, if you use the county's ninety percent rule, the taxes would be just over two thousand five hundred dollars per door. So the developer's incentive request at thirteen fifty is about a forty-six percent abatement request. That's what it amounts to, using the county's ninety percent rule. The next data points, I know you're familiar with and you've just seen, taxes last year are very nominal. These are the taxes, the pilot payment, not taxes, during the first year, the cities highlighted in green, and then over a ten-year period, about five point six million dollars, just under a million dollars of payments to the city. The value of the incentive request to the developer, they're projecting this is a sixty-eight, around a sixty-eight million dollar project. And when you work through the two components of their incentive request, it's about a seven point one percent value of the incentive request. So as we've talked about many times, this is at the lower end of that range, and it's slightly lower than what our average is for, historically, for Chapter one hundred projects that are residential Chapter one hundred projects. And then the impact to the city, it's, assuming that calculation I just showed you at the top, it's about one point two million in lost property tax and sales tax revenues to the city to approve this incentive request. Again, this is the simple one-page summary, so you're clear on what the incentive request is. Two components through Chapter one hundred, the sales tax exemption resulting in that benefit to the developer, and the real property tax abatement, by my calculation, the amount of forty-six percent resulting in that benefit to the developer. So that's the focus of this discussion tonight. This table, I'm going to skip for the moment. You've seen this before. It's the, all of the incentives that the city has historically provided for residential development. I've included the greens and the next one, Douglas Station, which we'll talk about in just a moment. We'll come back to this if we, if we need to, but I know you're familiar with this chart. This then is new information. So this is sort of the, you know, I keep going back to the wrong slide here, the breaking news, so to speak, and I'll walk through what, what this analysis is, although I would say it's not so breaking news based on a brief caucus we had during the break here, we were talking about property valuation, so I know some of you are very familiar with this. So this is a simplified version of a chart that you've actually seen many times, that Mr. Dunning used to track for many years when he was the Assistant City Manager. It's tracking the valuation and the tax data associated with all of the Chapter one hundred apartment projects. So we start with the list of the incentivized apartment projects over on the far left, the years that each of those were approved. The market valuation as assigned by the county in twenty twenty-one is this column. This is the new information. So I just looked this information up a week ago, and these are the valuations that the county has provided for all of these apartment projects where the city's provided incentives. You may see a trend here. The county just bumped everything up by thirty-five percent across the board. So this is where we start to get into some of the more detailed analysis. When you work through the tax calculations, here's what the tax, taxes per door would be based on the county's valuation of the property this year. And the average is over, is about two thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars per door. So this is where we get into some of the, kind of the dilemma of some of the discussions we've had. You've heard the developer just describe to you that certainty and predictability is critical, and that's the base, that's, that's really the heart of their, their pilot requests, to have certainty over a period of time. But this data now bears out what the county told us. Last year, over the last couple of years, the Streets of West Prior project came online, and based on the county's valuation, that was nearly three thousand dollars per door. That was the valuation that when we looked at it and some of the, some developer attorneys, including Mr. Peterson and some others I've talked with, that was the cartoon eyeballs coming out of the head. That was the, you know, the concern is that's not sustainable for these type of projects, but the county's done exactly what they told us a couple of years ago, which is, they've now bumped all these valuations up. And so even with these increased valuations, Streets of West Prior are still at the top of the list, but they bumped these other projects up, which gets to this number here. So now we can turn to the second part of this analysis. This chart here is all of the incentivized, all of the incentivized apartment projects, whether it's Chapter one hundred or not, and it includes anything that has a pilot or we have the ability to analyze the taxes. Some, one of these, for example, the Elevate one-one-four, that's a TIF plan, doesn't have a fixed pilot, but eventually we will have, we will be able to calculate the taxes per door. I just looked this up an hour ago. We still don't have tax data for this one, which is why it's still a zero right here. Historically, these are the fixed pilots, these are the beginning fixed pilots, plus the escalator over time, that the city council has approved for these projects. And then the two most recent projects that you've approved, the North Point Phase Three and the Cityscape at Tudor Road, those are at eighteen hundred dollars per door. So as a point of comparison, the request tonight is back to the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty valuation, which is our per-door pilot, which is what the city council approved for the Phase One and Phase Two in the Streets of West Prior. Phase One is open, Phase Two is under construction now. Now compare that to the taxes per door, and we're back to the dilemma that we're facing, and we've discussed many times, which is, what do we do with these incentive requests given the taxes and what the county's doing with this? Now, back to the very beginning, this is further explanation on why I said this incentive request is essentially a forty-six percent abatement request, because I've been applying the rule that the county is now carrying out across the board for all of our apartment projects.
Before you continue, so on the residential side, I have friends, including in this room, that had a hundred percent increase, and then some that had twenty percent, and some that had forty percent, and some that had all kinds of different percentages. How come all of those are thirty-five percent exactly?
That's a, that's a good question.
Come on, you know the answer. Tell, tell us all, because we're just all perplexed. I have no, I have no clue.
So one of the things that I plan to do is take a look at some of the tax data for other types of land uses to see what they've done across the board for these different land uses.
They had algorithms and people behind the scenes assessing these properties. I didn't think they just put it in a spreadsheet and just pulled down the little lever that that applies thirty-five percent to everything.
When I, when I prepared this spreadsheet and I just ran the math here and I saw that and thought, well, there you go. That's what they did.
All right, you can, you can continue.
So I'm just about finished, but like I said, I wanted to stay factual. This is the usual type of analysis that we provide with this type of request. I wanted to make sure you understood the basis for what I'm characterizing as their incentive request, which is that forty-six, forty-six percent abatement request. There's probably a lot of issues to discuss and unpack, but I will stop there and we can get into your questions and discussion.
Well, the, the questions, we can, we can go into the questions, but let me just ask the most obvious ones as far as, we've been down this path before and where is staff at on this as far as, like, the eighteen hundred dollar benchmark? We pushed for that, but this is a smaller unit and they're talking about, we can, we as council can talk about the, the green, the green effect. But what, does the, does the thirteen percent reduction based on the smaller square footage match up with the way city management works with developers?
Not sure I have an answer to that question.
Yeah, that's fine. We can talk about it. All right, I'll leave it to council and we'll, we'll, we'll get there eventually. So Councilmember Shields, you want to start us off?
Sure, thank you, mayor. So one of the things that was brought up early in the presentation was that, and it may be characterized differently by different people, but either construction has started or, I'm sorry, it's getting very late, leveling groundwork, I'm sorry.
Right, so, so infrastructure permits have been issued and building permits were issued for multiple buildings for the previous iteration of this project.
And, and what has actually happened at this point for, like, what's, I think, I think you had sort of said that construction had started, so what?
I think site work had started. I don't know if any actual construction of the structures has started. I maybe have the developer answer that question for you, so you know exactly what they've done.
Absolutely.
Great question. We knew that would come up. From time to time, when we go from project to project, our subcontractors will call us and ask us, "Hey, when can we start?" We didn't pull up, just to be really clear, and I'll let you kind of make your judgments, we did not pull a building permit. There were no building permits issued. Did we build? No. Did we dig holes? No. We graded, and I guess technically we did dig a hole to put our sewer in. We, we had, some of the subs that we used, things were getting slow in the market, and we just paid them cash. We didn't use a construction loan. We didn't go through that whole process like you would when you typically start construction. I didn't organize a groundbreaking like we would typically do with the chamber. So it's, it's kind of nuanced. We had guys that were looking for work. We put them to work, putting in the sewer on Phase One and then putting in, but it's back in grass now, for whatever that's worth, so. Did we start, started something, but nothing significant is what I would say, and never closed a loan and didn't pull a permit for the construction of Going Vertical.
Okay. So this would probably be to Mr. Bushak. Would it be within the letter and the spirit of our policy to proceed with incentives on this kind of a project? What's your feeling with your experience doing this for the city for so many years?
Yeah, so that, that's a good question. We've discussed this quite a bit. This is one of those times where we're at the outer edges of that policy statement. The policy statement is, the city council will not consider or grant incentives for projects that have received any type of building permit or infrastructure permit, and then there's some exceptions that don't, don't really apply in this case. What I've said consistently is, ultimately, this is the city council's policy. It's up to you to decide ultimately how to apply that policy. But now to answer your question, it feels like, given the path that this project has traveled, that it started and for business reasons and the litigation reason they mentioned, that project essentially stopped. I think it's fair to say that this policy statement was made at a time when this type of situation was not even thought of. And so now we're presented with a new factual situation. Ultimately, like I said, it's up for you to decide whether this policy statement applies in this situation, but I think, given the unique facts of the circumstance, you could distinguish this situation from every other situation we've seen in the past.
And the, the new project, do you think it's substantively different from what was approved before? It's going to be a really different project? Obviously, it's going to be different for them financially.
And that's a good question. And one of the ways, one of the ways to test that is whether, on, on the zoning side, they would have to go through a new public hearing for a new preliminary development plan, or whether they could see, could proceed to a final development plan because the changes are not substantial enough to kick it back to a public hearing. And I think we're not at a point where that determination can be made quite yet.
Okay, that's, that's fair, because they don't really have actual plans in front of us at this point.
Right. They haven't made an application.
Okay. This question would probably be for the developer. If you were not able to make the E-units work, either the solar charging or the solar-powered units, are there other amenities that you would want to put in instead? Or what would it, how would the project be different if that doesn't work out?
Well, there's two things on the, on the Going Green, right? So when we talk about amenities specifically, I don't look at saving the tenants' money as an amenity. I don't even look at the E-units as an amenity, so I'm just getting my head wrapped around your question.
Well, I feel like the charging stations could be considered an amenity, because you pointed out that other projects only have a few of them. You, one of your ways that you'd be marketing this is that you have a whole array of them.
Yeah, so I'm going to have a hard time. You know, if we don't do our E-units, which is expensive, I haven't even told Kurt Peterson this, but I did get a lot of engineering back today about four o'clock from Olson. Olson Engineering, I don't know if you guys noticed, they do nationwide. They've got twenty-five hundred different buildings under construction right now or in the development process where they're putting in something comparable. They don't call it a unit, but they're, they're putting in the charge point stations and then they're doing solar. So they're slowly, Corey Wilson's becoming a regional and national expert. He's on our team. With all that being said, if I can't do all the solar that we want and it becomes potentially inviable, I, I can't walk away from the, the EV side of things. That trend is so aggressive and dynamic and nobody's ready for it. Nobody's ready for that. I think nationally, we're at just short of five percent, and it was ten, roughly ten million electric cars sold last year, and they think we're going to get to two hundred million in, you know, seven more years. Nobody's ready for it. The leading competitor here in Lee's Summit has four charge point stations. They charge for all of them. We can do better than that. Everybody can. The Dana and Parks Radio Show was on three or four weeks ago, and they, they did like a little montage. They were looking for someplace to charge in Lee's Summit, and they, they drove to Independence. And I'm sure there's plenty of places here, but our goal just initially, and, you know, you know, we took out a lot of slides, and I'm trying to be as quick as I can, so forgive me, but, you know, it's not just our EV units and our E-units. It's about the infrastructure for what's coming. So we're committed to twenty-seven charging stations that will be, I hate to use the word "free" because if you rent a garage, you will have complimentary EV charging. We will have one paid station at the clubhouse that people from around the area and community can charge, but, you know, I was looking at a Second and Delaware project downtown that was mentioned to me some time ago. They have one charging station. So to give people the ability to get fifty miles every day, you know, complimentary is a very big deal and a huge savings. I think Kurt showed it at over three hundred dollars in savings if you convert from like a Ford F-150 to a Ford Maverick. And that's where my head's going to be if we don't do solar and if we're not doing an E-unit and giving them that flat bill, it'll be all about electrical vehicle charging and plug-in access.
Okay. I think those are all my questions for the moment. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Edson.
Thank you, mayor. Mr. Peterson, on one of your slides, you said that, well, first of all, on the previous project that clarified, there were no incentive requests.
Absolutely right. The original project, not the new project, had no incentive request. That's right.
So on one of your slides for this project, you said that there were significant site challenges, and that was one of the reasons for the requests on this project. So how did those site challenges suddenly appear?
Yeah, they didn't suddenly appear. They were, they were always there. The rock was always there and the golf course challenges were there. Andy and Brian could speak to exactly when they were known, but it generally starts to happen when, you know, you, you get into the dirt. But no, they did, they didn't, they didn't appear just because we're doing a different project. That's true. Those are inherent in that site. You're exactly right.
Okay, well, I guess, okay. So why was the project significantly changed between the last one and this one?
Once, it's a great question. Once it was effectively executed, if you know what I mean, because it was, it was, the project was, was killed for some of the reasons for beating around the bush, but it was, it was, it was, it was executed. With a fresh slate, and frankly, I'm, I know Andy would say this, it's come from conversations with some of you, just in terms of like, what, what do we need, right? And that's, that's, that's where this idea of SLA came from, was from conversation in the community and with certain people, you know, in this room about, what can we do? Again, a lot of it focused even on the, you know, the college grads coming home. So what happened? Well, kind of lemonade, right? I mean, nobody wanted to have what happened and the huge amount of money that was, you could say wasted over the last year on that site, but the fact that they had to start over again, eh, it's, this is the lemonade, SLA, so that's how it came about.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember DeMoral.
Thank you, mayor. I, I guess I'm going to, I'm going to follow up with those questionings. What has changed that the, the building challenges or the construction challenges have changed? If, if there were challenges before, where did those challenges go? Are the challenges still there?
Yeah, and I don't want to put too much, I want to be careful in answering the question. I don't want to put too much single-minded focus just on, if you, if you remember back, not that you have to remember every word I say, but when talking about sales tax exemption, right? That's a great benefit. Remember, it was over a million dollars in helping the project. The third, one of three of the justifications was that there's some hard things about this site. And as Ms. Edson and I just went back and forth and talked about, those, those, those were there, councilmen. But the, the other factors, you know, really justifying it are, are new to this, that it's SLA and the fact that it literally, the reason you don't see it is because it, it doesn't pencil as well as if you just go forward and charge as much as you can. And then the other was this whole idea of, you know, even if it's not smart green, I mean, you're hearing the developer say it tonight. I mean, this is the way closed-door conversations go too. Even if we can't figure out a way to do smart green, I want to find a way to be the market leader in this city for the whole metro in charging stations. So that is not cheap. So when you add up all three of those items, that's really, we would say, the justification for the sales tax exemption. So I'm answering your question, hopefully, same with Councilwoman Edson, about the, site conditions didn't change, right? But they're just as challenging as they were, but we have these other factors too that hopefully offer plenty of justification for the, for the incentive.
In the presentation, uh, I, I did not hear a cost for the, for the, for the green initiative. What, what is the cost? Do you have a cost going?
That was intentional. That, that was intentional because you heard, and he's not joking, we talked a lot today. We had a couple of meetings together. And even that additional information he was getting from Olson today about apparently cost and things like that, which updates the information we got Friday, really expensive. I don't think it'd probably be a great idea on the record to start talking about our moving targets other than that the approximately million dollars in savings from um that, that we were talking about through the additional reduction of pilot down to thirteen fifty, if you remember that part of the conversation, fifteen sixty-six to thirteen fifty, right? That incremental reduction of pilot generated, rough math, about a million dollars over the ten years. Way more than that is the, is the order of magnitude. But I don't think you're ready to put a number on the record.
You, you could use spitball math and go eight.
Go ahead and speak in the mic.
Yeah, so the projections we got back um tonight were two hundred and seventy-five to three hundred megawatts a year on our site at eight dollars a, a watt for install before infrastructure, before um anything that we do on the garages, before any upgrading of panels. So I think that ends up being two point four million dollars. Again, those numbers are going to move between now and the next time I see you on these issues, so.
Move up or down?
We'll know. We'll know, we'll know a little bit more later. So we're waiting on our irradiance uh numbers to come back from Olson. That's a study of how the sun is going to hit that panel. And um quite frankly, I, I thought we were going to be presenting in July and my team was ready to, to come up with hard numbers in July. But um the city did a good job of getting us in a little bit earlier. So if I look a little bit unprepared, that's, that's probably why.
So obviously, my next question, if there wasn't a green initiative and you could save two point four million, would you be asking for incentives?
Um, if, so, so you'll have to forgive me for not completely understanding the question because there's so many prongs here. If I couldn't go, if I wasn't going green-
It's the incremental. I'm going to interrupt just because it's really, it's the two-
Riding the checks. You're riding the checks.
It's the two-step, right? It's the two-step process, Councilman Demora, that, which is why we try to be really clear on that, so it doesn't get confusing. So I'm glad you're asking it again. Which is that step down from eighteen hundred to fifteen sixty-six is totally based on the exact math of the smaller units, right? We can't get as much rent. And we know how much rent we're going to lose for doing that move to try to hit this social and economic goal that we talked about, right? Of getting people to have a more affordable unit that's smaller. It's that second two hundred, sorry, I have to pull up, two hundred and sixteen dollars, right? To get down to thirteen fifty, whatever that math, yeah, that's right, two hundred and sixteen dollars. That's the one that's specific to smart green. So if we don't do smart green, then we're at the fifteen sixty-six with SLA. That's, sorry to steal your thunder, but-
No, that's it.
Just to have the numbers on my mind.
It's about SLA. It's about having smaller units. It's about not having the amount of gross revenues that you would normally have, Fred, that, that makes this project so extraordinary and challenging. When you just create smaller units, and I want to make sure I hit this very hard because you're going to see on the next project as well. My, my pool didn't change. Um, the amenities didn't change. Everything's there, but when you shrink your units, you're shrinking your gross revenue. And so your profitability across that site goes down. And when we look at all the competitive sites in Lee Summit, there's a reason nobody wants to build small, livable, and affordable. It's like finishing out your basement and getting rent for that. We don't, we don't have that extra space and we won't, we won't have it. But the meetings I had with, with, with um Councilperson Edison was, hey, how do we make things more affordable? And, and we've done it. We've done it a little bit in Raymore. You saw the pictures of it, you know, against, head-to-head with something that's off of West Prior that's very nice and, and very attractive. That's twenty-eight hundred dollars in rent. I'm at eighteen fifty for a different product in Raymore, but with the exact same level of quality. And it's just a smaller unit. There's a reason nobody wants to do that. I hope, I hope that makes sense. I know it's multi-pronged.
Well, yeah. I mean, I, I understand completely what you're saying. But, but the green initiative, I, I, you said a number, a percentage while ago of, of how many millions of, of EVs are going to be in the market. I don't remember that number, but that number was, was enormous.
Yeah.
On the backside of that, though, the, the infrastructure, and I'm talking roads, highways, bridges, nobody's ready for that. I don't think that's going to happen because of that. Because the, the weight of an EV unit is enormous. And-
Just, just the uh, the new Ford Lightning is a problem for a lot of people. The Rivian is a small truck. But also what we're not talking about is the Nissan Leaf or the Hyundai Ioniq. They're not, they're small, the Chevy Bolt. So I hear you on that. Missouri actually is doing a, and I hope you guys don't mind the general dialogue. Missouri is, had just commissioned their ten-year EV plan for infrastructure. And like you're saying, Fred, it's got a lot of problems and a lot of holes. So whether or not we ever get to um a fifty percent adoption on EVs, I'm building out my site, starting out at ten percent EV, uh EV chargers. Ten percent of the people that live there, I'm assuming, are going, by the time I get done, will have EVs and they will charge for free. And that goes back to affordability.
I think, I think that's great. The uh, I, I, well, I guess that goes with how many people you were expecting to, to actually rent that, that would have an EV. But that, I, that, that's immaterial. I, I do have another question for me, you, Mr. Elam, or Mr. Bushak, either one. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Maggie. And the, the uh, is the PDP still active on this, on this property?
Yes.
Okay, so how do we, how do we do that with a active PDP and, and switch plans? And I know you touched on that, and I, I, you know, I'm not trying to get you to reiterate, but how does that transition to a new, new plan completely with an existing PDP?
Uh, thank you, Councilmember Demora. Wow, uh, Councilmember Demora. Joshua Johnson, Director of Development Services. We'd have to look at the changes in the overall site plans, the traffic circulation, things of that nature. Um, I could see some challenges with the changes to elevations. But really, um, I'm not hearing a drastic change in unit count here today. So we could accomplish it through a new FDP. However, there are some criteria we have between major and minor changes to PDPs that could require a new whole public hearing process. So I could see maybe where you're going, hey, if we shrink units, now we get more units. Yeah, that could require a new PDP depending on the percent, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Mayor, I'll stop there. Thank you.
Okay.
I've got more, but I'll, I'll let, I see more names here.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Hodges.
So I'm just going to throw a few thoughts out there. I, I have to be honest, I actually like the previous plan better. I, I'm not a huge, is this a huge selling point for me on the green initiative? Not a big fan, just being honest. I guess when, if I'm thinking, if I'm going to be, if, if I can afford an, an EV and maintain it, then I'm probably not going to be looking at your smaller units. I'll probably be looking somewhere like the Donovan or somewhere like, not dissing yours. It's just if, if I can have that standard of living and afford a more expensive vehicle, I'm probably going to be more on the other side of things. So I don't know, it almost seems contradictory to me to, to focus on this class when you're focusing on a more affordable attain, attainability. So if I'm, if I'm a struggling college student, or I'm, I guarantee you, I'm not going to be driving around and, you know, not to say, I'm, I, obviously, there's different levels. But even the, I mean, there's maintenance, there, there's just things that, I don't know, I just, I just think of that as being more of a higher-class thing. I, I just, I don't feel like it fits. It just doesn't fit in my head with the attainability aspect that you're coming from. I don't know, I just, it, it just doesn't flow for me. I get the affordable, the smaller unit thing, I, I get that. But the two together, I, it doesn't make sense to me. But again, I did like the first plan that came and was nixed, but that's just my opinion.
Mayor, can I do a ten-second just to, I'm not even going to try to talk Councilwoman Hodges into uh green, I'm not at all. But just kind of a factual point is that, I was kind of a nerd with, I read Consumer Reports every month and I like reading about cars and following especially the, kind of the green industry as it applies to cars, which is what we're talking about, EVs. And it's amazing, I actually, before the meeting, sat there. I actually left it on my phone, but we're out of time, so I'm not going to read from it. But I went through all the EVs now that are starting in the, at thirty thousand dollars, from the Leaf to the Bolt. I mean, sure, there's the Tesla and the Rivian and all that, and those are super cool. But the bulk of the millions and millions of adopters here that are going to happen are going to happen down in that, starting in the thirties, right, getting into the forties. And those are the people actually that rent this kind, this kind of unit. It does start to get to the sweet spot. I'm not trying to talk you into tonight if you're not supporting smart green, but I did want to have that quick factual back and forth.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Lovell?
Well, I was just in, Mr. Peterson, as a electric vehicle owner, um, I was, I think there are a lot of misconceptions as to the cost and affordability and the maintenance. In fact, the cost of ownership for a Tesla Model Three is lower than a Honda Accord or a Toyota Camry. So I'm not saying, I'm just, I think there's a lot of misconceptions. But I also think the future of vehicles is, is electric. And if anything, I hope this just kind of resonates with us as a city to know what's ahead of us and, and being prepared for that. So anyway, that was just a point of clarification on, and Mr. Peterson kind of touched on it, but about electric vehicles in general and their cost and ownership and all that stuff, so. No, it's not a question, but anyway, thanks, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Felker.
Thank you, Mayor. Just, I wanted to go back to the SLA question and just my, my question I wrote down was where else is it happening? Are we, are we seeing it anywhere else? I know you mentioned Raymore, so I'll maybe come to that, but-
We've actually talked a lot about this. I've never seen it as this targeted and focused as the theme of an, of a project like this developer is making it and really trying to tackle a specific problem. Usually where you'll see the smaller units is the more urban you get, right? I mean, just the way it is. But it also doesn't tend to be cheaper because the more urban you get, the more expensive it gets. So personally, never exactly like this. Hopefully, you'll see more though, going forward.
But I think it was represented, maybe if I heard correctly that-
Oh, Raymore, I'm sorry.
Raymore is an example of where you've done that already?
So what Andy's talking about is right next to City Hall by the police station, if you guys have been over there, is, is their really nice project where they started to think about and recognize these elements. I would say it was probably the breeding ground for then conversations with people too, where you started to lightbulb, but the whole project's theme was not designed around that. It's just, like I said, it was probably the early stages, which is why we have images and things like that. Because we think it, it is the building blocks for what we'd like to do on an entire project.
Because you, the way it was, you talked about was it was comparable to, I thought you said Streets of West Prior.
We're trying not to be overly specific, Councilman, if you know what I mean. Just to be polite about to his-
I don't care.
Yeah, but, but right, to the, to the market. But you're right, uh, very nice, somewhat recent project in Lee Summit like that, yeah. That, that's what we were trying to compare to.
And were there incentives on the Raymore project?
No.
No, no.
Other than we bought the ground for absolutely dirt cheap that came up. And we got the ground financed, uh, project financed with no money down.
That's where the-
And a different, by the way, this is, I don't want to go there if you don't want to go there, but also remember a very different county. So for time's sake, I'm saying that I could launch now and explain when we're doing Cass County work and how we don't encounter some of the challenges. They put on the headline there in the presentation with this county. So a soft, short answer to kind of, there are some major differences with that project being a different county.
In, in terms of taxes?
And predictability and the ability to work with the assessor and things like that when things are off.
Got it.
Yes, sir.
I believe when we've had this conversation with prior applications, the question might have been asked, buy and hold, what's your intent?
We talked about this too, because I've been, had the privilege of being around a little bit in, in front of this council and this has been asked before, so very similar to the other, I mean, every client I've ever had, the idea of, first of all, these guys are big-time holders, you probably know that by reputation, big-time holders. But um if there's some opportunity at some point, then they, they have to be able to sell. But, but they're two Kansas City guys, not out-of-town carpetbaggers, right? They're coming in to flip. But, but being real, because that's reputation here. They're not interested in having sort of restrictions if there's ever an opportunity to sell, you know, maybe, maybe they would, but no intention.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay. And this last question is actually maybe for staff. Are there a special, what kind of special approval, if any, do we have to go through if the solar elements of this were fully approved? Is there any, is it just a normal process and it's just incorporated in that? Or are there certain things, kind of hurdles we're getting over?
I don't think there's any hurdles in terms of city council. We actually had this discussion with the applicant last week, talking with our, our building inspector. And he said that everything he's seen so far would meet our building codes and is doable.
Okay, okay. Oh, and I'm sorry, so another question actually for applicant. Thank you, Mr. Bushak. I think I, in, in the applica, or excuse me, the presentation materials, the E-units, it's not all units. There's a select.
That's right.
The total unit count was-
We were in the, it was in the ten percent range.
Ten percent.
It's going to be, currently, it's thirteen percent.
Yeah, thirteen percent.
And then you said preferences for first responders, teachers, I mean, what?
I, I'm, I did the, I mean, we all have our rules on the team and just being serious. I did the disclaimer on there because that is the heart of this developer. And they've done some of that, they've had those feelings elsewhere and there's been some of that's gone on. We are still checking to make sure that we follow all um legal parameters and things like that.
Sure, we can steer, but it would sure be nice to give city responders the discounts that they probably deserve.
Yeah, so I, that was actually, I was going to, where's, what's the, what kind of legal limitations do we have?
So high level, you're hearing intention, and there are sometimes ways to accomplish goals that are, that you, you can do it right. And at this point, we're staying high level and not getting specific, but wanted to make sure you knew the intention.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Petam Lopez.
Thanks, Mayor. You're coming back to us um with a very unique alternative to your first uh, go, go at it with the city, your first introduction to the city. So this is a very different concept, and unfortunately, here we are, it's been a late night. So please bear with us as, you know, our, our brains are not functioning as, as uh, as crisp as they were earlier tonight. But with that being said, um, you know, as far as, you, you asked earlier, Mr. Peterson, you know, at the end of the night, you want our perspective on mainly two things. I guess the SLA, are we generally in favor and, and open to this concept? And then also the, the green. So, so to answer those specific questions, I, I think, and as a council, we're struggling because we're trying to compare it to your original presentation and PDP that you came in with. I think you've been very transparent and honest about why you had to scrap that. And so I, I, I'm moving beyond that. I know some of my colleagues may not, have, have not gotten there yet. Your new concept itself, the SLA, we've talked about this for a long, long time. And you're coming to us having thought it pretty clearly as far as that affordability, that big, that word, afforded, you know, more affordable housing for, for people in this market. Those of us that have young professional stu, kids, recent college grads into the workforce, as you said, Mr. Peterson, I have a daughter that's a, just finished her first year as a teacher and looked at some of these other options, both to rent. Obviously, she's not prepared to buy at this point. She's living in our basement, saving her pennies, and eventually we'll buy something. But I think this would be a great alternative for someone like that and other uh new workforce professionals and first responders. So I like the idea that you came back and you were creative with this new concept. As far as the green uh component, uh, that's something that's a little different. And I, I don't know that we're all warm and fuzzy about that at this point. If you get the charging stations, I think that's great. And you can kind of start chipping away at that part of it as, as more people buy EV vehicles. And as far as the pilots themselves, to give you some feedback, that, that directly impacts the pilot, as you all have clearly pointed that out. So I think if we're looking at wh, whether it falls within recent history- So I think if we're looking at whether it falls within recent history on similar type investment properties, commercial properties, it does somewhat fall in line. I think you can go back along with staff and maybe sharpen the pencil a little bit and kind of define the numbers maybe a little bit more as you define your costs, which I think that's acceptable and, and normal. So I'd encourage you to do that. But the overall concept of SLA, I think that's what we've been asking for, for a long time in this market, in this community. This is a good, someone's sticking their neck out, and I commend you for that. It's a first attempt to try to really address that issue in our community in Lee Summit. It's just a first step, and that's not going to solve all the affordability issues in this market, but it's a good first step. So I'd be in favor of, if you all came back and you fine, fine tuned and sharpened the pencil, of maybe approving a concept like that. So that, those are my thoughts, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Shields?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd mostly echo what Councilmember Lopez, or sorry, Mayor Potem Lopez, didn't mean to demote you, that I think it's a good project. I think, yeah, it's not going to solve the attainability issue with housing here, but it's one more housing choice that there's not a lot of in the market, and I think that's good to give people more options and more opportunities, especially for young professionals and essential workers to have more options to live in Lee Summit, work in Lee Summit. I'm open to the, the E-units and charging stations. I think, I just think it's a good idea. I think that you're right that that is the future, that I assume that the current vehicle that I drive is going to be the last gas-powered vehicle that I ever buy, because it's just, I mean, it's just everything's coming on the market, it's, it's changing, it's, and I think providing that opportunity is going to be good, and I'm, I'm open to, to supporting that, because I think it's something that's going to really benefit the community. And we, you know, we look at these different incentive packages, we talk about, you know, incentivizing to provide higher quality in addition to more affordability, and I think, like any other amenity, we might look at a project that providing these charging stations is going to be a real, a good amenity, a good addition to the, to the project. So I, I'm open to it, I don't know if the rest of the council is, but I would certainly be open to that. And I think the proposed pilots at each level makes sense to me, that, you know, they're in line with what we've approved really recently, just slightly reduced to reflect the reduced square footage, I can see that logic, and I can see a little bit of an extra nudge to help bring online some of those additional solar charging amenities. So that's where I'm at, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Lovell?
Thanks, Mayor. I, I'm, I'm very intrigued with, with some of the things that are being presented. You know, again, you know, my use of an EV vehicle is, but I, but I'm reading the tea leaves, and I know, I know where the future of vehicles is going, I know the things that we can do now as a city, or even I think you'll start to see more of this incorporated into, into home building. I think, where I think the misconception is, like, we call it green, is, is that, where actually, like, to me, it's more about removing our dependence upon the grid, whether that's Evergy or anyone else, and creating solutions that empower the owner or the individual to take control of kind of their opportunity to create their own energy. I think that's the bigger plug in something like that, especially as we talk about power lines and moving things like that. I think anything we can start doing to look at this in the future, I think it minimizes our, our need and our dependency on a grid. So I like that, I like the rainwater retainage. Again, I think it reduces the stress on our utilities. There's just a lot of things that I like with the components of innovating how we're building things. And it has to start somewhere, and the costs are always prohibitive early on, and as we, it becomes more mainstream, and we see it adopted in more places, I think, I think it ends up being a, a big plus outside of whatever environmental factors you want to, you want to talk about. I like the idea that we are, so I, you know, I, the affordability, affordability or attainable thing, my thing has always been, I think we have to be very careful about how we approach those things, because I think using mechanisms to falsely create affordability, whether that be through quality or how we're building things, I don't think is necessarily the step that, that we would want to go as a city or a community. So I think a decreased footprint, same amenities, same quality, I think is a better way of achieving some of those goals. But all of that being said, like, you know, my, my reservation, and it wouldn't be just with your project, is more philosophically with multifamily and the continued development of multifamily, and whether that is a net positive for our city long term, or we should be more cautious about the amount of units that we're greenlighting to keep going in this city and community. I do think there are targeted areas that need more density, and so I think maybe there's more opportunities there, but I would just say, I guess with more understanding of the costs and some of the things that are going on with this, I would say, you know, I'd be open to more information, as Councilmember Mayor Potem Lopez said. But I, I do applaud the efforts of bringing something new and really rethinking how we develop and build. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Felker?
Thank you, Mayor. So I like the idea of SLA. I can be supportive of exploring the E-components, the green element. I'm actually kind of going back to what, and I know this really gets down to the, maybe the crux of the matter is this, our starting number. And I'm just, I'm still wrestling with, I know where the county goes, I know no of us really likes where the county is going on everything, but then we look at our history, where we've been, and the degree of incentive effectively that we've given prior projects. And so I struggle with starting at the $1,800 number. That's where my, my, and I really mentioned it earlier, but as I just kind of reflect on it, and as we got to think years in advance, and we have a, what, every two years is a 3% increase, I think is what the proposal is. So I, I'm, I guess that's my only, at this point, my primary reservation is just what's our starting number. And I know Mayor Potem did mention sharpening the pencil, looking at things, and is there a number that's different? Yeah, I know six months ago or so, we did 1,800, and that was for us probably looked at as an increase, because the developer kind of came with that. And yet, we're, we're still in a position where the, 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 in fact, application by the county, which we, again, don't always like the way, the direction they're going, but it is significantly higher than where we'd be starting. So I'm wrestling with that right now, that's probably the one piece I've got a little bit of a challenge with. So I think that's, for me, I think that's a green light with, I'm, I'm asking to negotiate that a little bit, that part of the deal. So, Mayor, that's what I've got.
Okay. Negotiate the.
Just looking at this, yeah, the starting point, we started 1,800 and build in, back into the, the SLA and the, the green element.
So there can be more discussion, but I'm not seeing anybody right now, so I'll just kind of chime in on a couple things. So you've got the, the, the two questions posed to us were the pilots for the small, for the SLA, smaller livable, attainable. And then I like asked staff if that, like, reduction kind of corresponds with, and the reason I ask is because it does kind of make sense to me that if it's a smaller unit, then you're going to pay less per unit for the taxes. I just didn't know if staff disagreed with that, and I don't like always, I don't like disagreeing with staff. I, I'm all right, you can, you know, go ahead, yeah. I, I think it makes sense.
I'll just offer, I think, I processed, all the way back to your very first question, I think I processed that a little bit more, I talked with Mr. Dunning, and if you, here's my answer now, I think I do have an answer. If you accept the premise that a fair starting point is 1,800, I can't argue with the math associated with the reduction in size. And then, so that gets down to the 1566, and then the valuation of the Smart Green, that's sort of a policy issue for you to provide feedback, which you've been providing. And so I guess that's.
That's, that's what I needed right there.
Right, I mean, I think that's, that's the answer to your question, circling back to that.
But since you're up here, can you go to the 35% increase page again?
Yes.
You know, to me, I, I know philosophically, we all talk about these things, but this, this 35% increase that we started talking about tonight is not fair, it's not just, it's not, there's not a system, it's simply a percentage, and it's not based on value, whereas the rest of us are subjective, subjected to an assessment that is supposed to be based on comps in the area and, and, you know, like properties. So in other words, this is why I suppose I am a proponent of certainty, because this is what the county can do to someone after they develop, and in our community, they can, they can do these types of things, and, you know, it doesn't, it doesn't help us as a community. So I just like the, I'm, I'm, that's why sometimes I am a, I guess, a proponent for the pilots, because it creates the certainty so that we can move forward with a high-quality development. And I'm intrigued by the 875 square foot unit. I, I haven't, right, you haven't, I haven't seen that in Lee Summit. So if it makes sense that we come down to the 15, is it 1566, what is it, Mr. Bushack?
Yes, that's what, 1566, just for the, the smaller size.
I, I align with that, and I'm, I'm, I like that, because it creates certainty, we're still bringing in significant tax dollars. Now, when we go to the green, I, I can get along, like, Mr. Councilmember Lovell said something about the retention of the rainwater, that directs, that's directly aligned with what we were talking about earlier as far as stormwater. So I'm like, okay, that's a public, that's a public benefit, you know, containing all of that and reusing it. If we want to incentivize the, the EV charging units and things like that, I think that's a pretty tough discussion to have, and I love it. You guys make me want to go buy an electric vehicle, but, and get, get online, but I don't know if, I don't know, we don't know enough about how others, like you're saying, others charge for it, then, you know, maybe we should charge for it. In other words, I'm, I'm absolutely behind the pilot for the, the smaller unit. The green, I'm, I'm partially for it, like, if you can say it's a public improvement, like Councilmember Lovell was talking about the retention on the, on the roof, retention of the rainwater and such, and reusing it, that's pretty cool. So if we can give some consideration there, that's, that's, that makes sense to me. The other stuff is probably a little bit more of a leap for us, because we're not used to having this conversation. It's just, it's, and, and like you said, where are they doing, where, where are they doing EVs? I mean, you know, in the suburbs. So with that said, we've gotten most everybody's feedback. Councilmember DeMorrow, did you want to ever come back around and chime in a little bit? Add, add some of your thoughts, because you spoke earlier, but I think you're the, you and Councilmember Edson kind of spoke to her, to her, I think you're the last one. Generally supportive of the pilot and then the, or generally, and then the other one is the green, is the?
Generally supportive of the pilot. I, I think the, the best path that I would, I would recommend is to, you know, come back, assess the costs, and come back with an actual cost analysis that is up to date, that, that, that you can, you know, I, I think that it's going to be a moving target on a lot of your, a lot of your items, and, you know. I think what we have to hear is, what, what are we actually getting for the incentive? I mean, I, I was, you know, last year or whatever, I was, when, when there were no incentives, when, when there were, were multiple asks of, are, are you going to do incentives? And it, you know, the answer was no, no, no. I was pretty well happy, and, and now we're, we're at, being asked to incentivize green initiative, and, you know, I have to understand, I mean, I, I, you know, this, this is a, a future initiative that is gaining groundswell and, and, you know, but are we ready? I, I don't know, I don't think so, because it's, like I said, the infrastructure has to be so improved to, to, you know, to actually have that many vehicles on the street. And I don't know if, if, if there will be enough money to pay for bridges and roads and things like that. I mean, we struggle now to get a few million dollars here and there. But anyway, assessing the value, or assessing the costs, coming back, and then, but I, I do, yeah, I don't, I don't feel good incentivizing the, the green initiative right now. Thank you, sir.
Okay, okay, Mr. Peterson, I think you've got, we basically answered those two questions. It took us a while to get there, but we got there.
Good feedback.
And I think, you know, you got, you got some challenges, yeah.
Gives us direction, this is what this, it's painful sometimes for you guys, but it helps us a ton.
Yeah. Now, we can, we can go to the next agenda item.
It takes probably two minutes, because everything is identical, that these projects are twin projects, and when you say I'm not launching.
I'm holding you to two minutes.
Yeah, well, no, really. How about this, I have, I'm on one page with a few bullets, and it's really showing you the site, so you really pause for a second, know the site, but it's, it's, it's the same, well, I'm starting to do it. It, it's, everything we've talked about applies, it has to be different units on a different piece of dirt, so it really is about a minute or two, when you say so.
All right. Does anybody want to comment on this one any further, before we go to the next one? Okay, it's the same presentation, but he's got a couple different slides, so.
That's right.
Mr. Bushack?
Yeah, I'm going to pull up his presentation here.
And we're actually not going to go through a big presentation, but for the record, there are two different projects, so we put a full presentation into the record. So again, the good news is you're not getting a presentation here, other than, let's look at the project site, so you know what it applies to. Again, we duplicated everything on purpose. So this was the site of a, it was a project, it was not this developer, it was a project that was going to be a low-income housing tax credit project, just there across from the high school to the west, just north of the Lee Summit Police Station there at Tudor and Douglas. It's about a six and a half acre site, which is what you're looking at in orange, and what you're looking at on the screen there is a few key metrics of the low-income housing tax credit, just a project to draw a distinction. It had all two and three-bedroom units. It had no pool, it didn't have a clubhouse or exercise facilities, that's what it was. And you know what? That's, that can be good for a community, right? It just so happens that as that project was not able to move forward, I think most of you heard, they didn't get the credits and things like that. So the project that's being proposed by, again, the same developer with SLA plus perhaps Smart Green, the whole conversation we just had, but instead of being 396 units across two phases, it's a one-phase project, 150, approximately 150 units, you get the clubhouse, you get the pool, and you can read the rest, again, not to belabor it, it's the same, exact same high quality that we just talked about in the last presentation. And with that, I said, see, I did it, that was less than two minutes, Mayor, but it gives you a sense, everything we talked about applies to this, unless you say otherwise, which we do want to hear this, we're going to apply your feedback, if you know what I mean, on the overall concept, unless there's something about the smaller unit count or the location that you think changes your comments, that's what we'd be soliciting right now.
What's the unit count going from to?
It's 150 now with five buildings instead of eight, and the previous units were just about 150. We're just doing it in five buildings instead of eight.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, not a change there. We changed the, again, if we were doing a long presentation, we changed it, better access, all that.
I can see the, yeah, I can see the, the schematics here, the site plans, but, but the number of units basically is the same.
Yeah, Andy just confirmed that, yes, sir.
All right. All right, any comments, questions? Okay, yes, Councilmember Edson?
Yeah, just real quick, so are these two-story, three-story, one-story? I can't tell.
Councilwoman, they're all three-story.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. All right. Well, this has been a wildly entertaining evening, and we have a nice crowd here, so I think we're going to move to their next agenda item, so that we can get them all home, comfy in their warm beds. What?
Your definition of entertainment is different.
I mean, who doesn't want to talk about stormwater?
Maybe this.
I think it might be the night.
Let's pass them down to the.
We're going to start with, thank you all for the, for the presentations, yeah, yeah, yeah. We will start with City Clerk Stacy Lombardo with Resolution Number 23-17, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution 23-
Resolution twenty-three dash seventeen, a resolution approving the appointment of successor directors to the Board of Directors of the New Longview Community Improvement District.
All right, thank you. I have a motion to adopt Resolution twenty-three seventeen by Councilmember Shields, seconded by Councilmember Edson. Discussion? Yes, Councilmember Demorrow.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I may be dreaming this, I'm, I'm half, half asleep right now, but at one time, didn't we talk about in some committee, maybe on this dais, on a city, in a city council meeting, about adding more city officials or, or people from the city on, on boards and, and, excuse me, on successors of directors of, of CIDs and TIFs? I think right now with, with the roster, I think Mr. Dunning is on it, but he's the only city official. So, comment, please?
Yeah, Mr. Dunning or Mr. Bushak, do you guys, can you help me?
That's correct. I, I am, I am serving on this one and as we create these CIDs or TDDs, we are looking to place at minimum one city representative on each one of these, and we have been doing that for quite some time. We do have some CIDs and TDDs that exist prior to us implementing that practice. We do have some that have more than one. So, it's kind of a blend, but we are, everyone that we are bringing forward, that we have, I don't know for how many years, David, but we've been, been working with the developers to put a city representative on.
Okay. I, I thought we had discussion to add more, but, but I'll, I'll stop there. I mean, I, I think we're happy with one at least. Go ahead, I'm sorry, sir.
Yes, I think, I mean, that's been our practice now. So, behind me, Mr. Johnson, Mr. Elam, Ms. Wordleman, they're on various boards also, so we do have oversight. There's one person that goes to those meetings, monitors their activities, answers questions, comes back to our team if there's any issues that come up, and that, that practice is working well.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, any further discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. Passes eight-zero, thank you. Councilmember Lovell, would you start us off on proposed ordinances forwarded from committee with bill number twenty-three dash one-three-one?
Yes, sir. I move to advance the second reading, bill number twenty-three dash one-three-one, ordinance approving modification number four to the agreement with Crawford, Murphy, and Tilly Incorporated for on-call professional planning and engineering services for the airport RFQ number twenty-twenty dash zero-six-seven in the amount of thirty-nine thousand, two-hundred dollars and authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement for the same.
Thank you. We have a motion to move to second reading, bill number twenty-three dash one-three-one by Councilmember Lovell, seconded by Councilmember Shields. Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. Passes eight-zero. Councilmember Lovell, would you please?
I move for adoption, bill number twenty-three dash one-three-one, ordinance approving modification number four to the agreement with Crawford, Murphy, and Tilly Incorporated for on-call professional planning and engineering services for the airport RFQ number twenty-twenty dash zero-six-seven in the amount of thirty-nine thousand, two-hundred dollars and authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement for the same.
Thank you. I have a motion to adopt by Councilmember Lovell, seconded by Councilmember Hodges. Discussion? Please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. That bill is adopted unanimously, thank you. Councilmember Demorrow, would you please read bill number twenty-three dash one-three-two?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to advance the second reading, bill number twenty-three dash one-three-two, an ordinance approving congestion mitigation and air quality agreement between the City of Lee Summit, Missouri and Missouri High, Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission related to the public improvement project designated as federal project number CMAQ three-three-zero-two, intersection of Ward and Bursells within the City of Lee Summit, Missouri, and authorizing the mayor to execute the same.
Thank you. We have a motion to move to second reading, bill number twenty-three dash one-three-two by Councilmember Demorrow, seconded by Councilmember Shields. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. That does move to second reading. Councilmember Demorrow, would you please?
I move for adoption, bill number twenty-three dash one-three-two, an ordinance approving a congestion mitigation and air quality agreement between the City of Lee Summit, Missouri and the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission related to the public improvement project designated as federal project number CMAQ three-three-zero-two, intersection of Ward and Bursells within the city, limits of Lee Summit, Missouri, and authorizing the mayor to execute the same.
Thank you. We have a motion to adopt bill number twenty-three dash one-three-two by Councilmember Demorrow, seconded by Councilmember Edson. Discussion? Please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. It is adopted unanimously, thank you. Councilmember Hodges, would you please read bill number twenty-three dash one-three-three?
I move to second reading, bill number twenty-three dash one-three-three, an ordinance approving modification number six to an agreement for professional engineering services for the Colburn Road improvements from M-350 to Douglas Street, RFQ number five-six-nine dash three-two-two-seven-two with Garver LLC for an increase of one-hundred-and-seven-thousand, thirty-six dollars for the amended basic services with an amended not-to-exceed amount of two-million, two-hundred-and-nineteen-thousand, thirty-four dollars and authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement for the same.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion to adopt bill number, or motion to move to second reading, bill number twenty-three dash one-three-three by Councilmember Hodges, seconded by Councilmember Demorrow. Our screens are frozen?
Oh.
Then, can I get a roll call vote, please? Or is there any discussion first? No discussion? Okay, can I get a roll call vote?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Hodges?
Aye.
Councilmember Demorrow?
Aye.
Councilmember Pryor is absent. Councilmember Shields?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Lopez?
Aye.
Councilmember Felker?
Aye.
Councilmember Lovell?
Aye.
Councilmember Edson?
Aye.
Mayor Baird?
Aye.
All right, for adoption, Councilmember Hodges, please.
I move for the adoption of bill number twenty-three dash one-three-three, an ordinance approving modification number six to an agreement for professional engineering services for the Colburn Road improvements from M-350 to Douglas Street, RFQ number five-six-nine dash three-two-two-seven-two with Garver LLC for an increase of one-hundred-and-seven-thousand, thirty-six dollars for the amended basic services with an amended not-to-exceed amount of two-million, two-hundred-and-nineteen-thousand, thirty-four dollars and authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement for the same.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion to move to second reading, bill number twenty-three, no, motion to adopt bill number twenty-three dash one-three-three by Councilmember Hodges, seconded by Councilmember Demorrow. Discussion? Please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. It's adopted unanimously, thank you. Councilmember Shields, would you please read bill number twenty-three dash one-three-four?
Thank you, Mayor. I move for a second reading of bill number twenty-three dash one-three-four, an ordinance awarding the bid for project number seven-ninety-five for the, for the curb repair FY-24 program to Phoenix Concrete and Underground LLC in the amount of two-million, seven-hundred-and-forty-thousand, one-hundred-and-eight-seven dollars and ninety-three cents and authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement for the same.
Thank you. We have a motion to move to second reading, bill number twenty-three dash one-three-four by Councilmember Shields, seconded by Councilmember Edson. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. It goes to second reading. Councilmember Shields, would you please?
Thank you, Mayor. And I move for adoption of bill number twenty-three dash one-three-four, an ordinance awarding the bid for project number seven-ninety-five for the curb repair FY-24 program to Phoenix Concrete and Underground LLC in the amount of two-million, seven-hundred-and-forty-thousand, one-hundred-and-ninety-seven dollars and ninety-three cents and authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement for the same.
Thank you. We have a motion to adopt bill number twenty-three dash one-three-four by Councilmember Shields, seconded by Councilmember Hodges. Discussion? Please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. It is adopted unanimously, thank you. Mayor Protim Lopez, would you please read bill number twenty-three dash one-three-five?
Yes, thanks, Mayor. I move to advance the second reading, bill number twenty-three dash one-three-five, an ordinance approving a fixed base operator agreement between Messenger Aviation LLC and the City of Lee Summit, Missouri, to rent office space to perform aircraft sales and aircraft brokering at the Lee Summit Municipal Airport and authorizing the mayor to execute the same.
Thank you. We have a motion to move to second reading, bill number twenty-three dash one-three-five by Mayor Protim Lopez, seconded by Councilmember Hodges. Discussion? I mean, this sounds so cool, aircraft brokering. I'd love to do that. That would be so fun.
Pretty good commission, I would imagine.
I bet so. All right, seeing no discussion, please cast your vote. It's all right. All votes are in, please record the vote. It does go to second reading. Mayor Protim Lopez, would you please?
Yes. I now move for adoption of bill number twenty-three dash one-three-five, an ordinance approving a fixed base operator agreement between Messenger, hope I'm saying that right, Aviation LLC and the City of Lee Summit, Missouri, to rent office space to perform aircraft sales and aircraft brokering at the Lee Summit Municipal Airport and authorizing the mayor to execute the same.
Thank you. We have a motion to adopt bill number twenty-three dash one-three-five by Mayor, Mayor Protim Lopez and seconded by Councilmember Felker. Discussion? Please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. It's adopted unanimously, thank you. Councilmember Felker, would you please read bill number twenty-three dash one-three-six?
Mayor, I move to advance the second reading, bill number twenty-three dash one-three-six, an ordinance approving a fixed base operator agreement between Rebel Aviation and the City of Lee Summit, Missouri, to rent office and hangar space to perform flight training, aircraft rental, aircraft maintenance, and inspection services at the Lee Summit Municipal Airport and authorizing the mayor to execute the same.
Thank you. We have a motion to move to second reading, bill number twenty-three dash one-three-six by Councilmember Felker, seconded by Councilmember Demorrow. Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. Does move to second reading. Councilmember Felker, would you please?
Mayor, I move to advance, or excuse me, I move to adopt bill number twenty-three dash one-three-six, an ordinance approving a fixed base operator agreement between Rebel Aviation and the City of Lee Summit, Missouri, to rent office and hangar space to perform flight training, aircraft rental, aircraft maintenance, and inspection services at the Lee Summit Municipal Airport and authorizing the mayor to execute the same.
Thank you, sir. We have a motion to adopt bill number twenty-three dash one-three-six by Councilmember Felker, seconded by Councilmember Shields. Discussion? Please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. It is adopted unanimously, thank you. Councilmember Edson, would you please read bill number twenty-three dash one-three-seven?
Thank you, Mayor. I move for a second reading of bill number twenty-three dash one-three-seven, an ordinance approving the award of bid number twenty-twenty-one dash zero-six-six to Tandem Paving Company, Inc., for on-call asphalt construction and repairs and authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement for the same for a period of one year with four possible one-year renewal options.
Thank you. We have a motion to move to second reading, bill number twenty-three dash one-three-seven by Councilmember Edson, seconded by Councilmember Shields. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. It goes to second reading. Councilmember Edson, would you please?
Thank you, Mayor. I move for adoption of bill number twenty-three dash one-three-seven, an ordinance approving the award of bid number twenty-twenty-one dash zero-six-six to Tandem Paving Company, Inc., for on-call asphalt construction and repairs and authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement for the same for a period of one year with four possible one-year renewal options.
Thank you. We have a motion to adopt bill number twenty-three dash one-three-seven by Councilmember Edson, seconded by Councilmember Shields. Discussion? Please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. That bill is adopted unanimously, thank you. And I got to say, she, they only waited four hours and forty-five minutes for this one moment right here. Amy, how do you say your last name? Kenneman? Kenneman. And of course, Elaine Metcalf with Prodale are in the audience to bear witness to what we are about to vote on. Councilmember Demorrow, would you please read bill number twenty-three dash one-three-eight?
With much pleasure. I move to advance the second reading, bill number twenty-three dash one-three-eight, an ordinance approving a grant agreement between the City of Lee Summit, Missouri and the Missouri Department of Economic Development for Community Revitalization Matching Grant Program funding in order to help build a new youth center for a Prodale Youth Center.
All right. We have a motion to go to, motion to move to second reading, bill number twenty-three dash one-three-eight by Councilmember Demorrow, seconded by Councilmember Felker. Discussion? Yes, Councilmember Felker.
Thank you all for your good work. I, I was a very probably ineffective board member several years ago. I don't know that I did anything of any consequence except be inspired by what you guys, you all do. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Demorrow?
I want to congratulate Dr. Metcalf and thank Amy for the hard work. This, this is great. Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Elaine Metcalf, you do not get to win SIS of the Year two years in a row, I'm sorry, but it probably helped in some way maybe to get, to get this. Anyway, thank you all. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. Passes eight-zero. Councilmember Demorrow, would you please read for adoption?
I move for adoption, bill number twenty-three dash one-three-eight, an ordinance approving a grant agreement between the City of Lee Summit, Missouri and the Missouri Department of Economic Development for Community Revitalization Matching Grant Program funding in order to help build a new youth center for a Prodale Youth Center.
Thank you. We have a motion to adopt bill number twenty-three dash one-three-eight by Councilmember Demorrow, seconded by Councilmember Hodges. Discussion? Please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. And it is adopted. All right, congratulations. They had to, on the fly, apply for that grant, and they don't give you a lot of time on these things, so they did great. Okay, we have an emergency ordinance tonight. We're going to have to read it for a second reading and adoption because it was not ready for last week. We were still, I think, there was, it was all kinds of things going on with the insurance here, so Councilmember Lovell, would you please read bill number twenty-three dash one-three-nine?
Sir, I move to advance the second reading, bill number twenty-three dash one-three-nine, an ordinance approving the fiscal year 2024 Property and Liability Insurance Program, authorizing the city manager enter into agreements with Travelers Insurance and Chubb Limited for the procurement of property and liability insurance coverage and related services for fiscal year 2024, and appropriating funds and directing the payment therefore, and authorizing the city attorney to approve individual claim expenses and/or settlements in amounts not to exceed twenty-thousand dollars per claim, all as an emergency ordinance pursuant to sections three-point-one-three, F-one, and three of the charter.
Yep. Thank you. We have a motion to move to second reading, bill number twenty-three dash one-three-nine by Councilmember Lovell, seconded by Councilmember Edson. Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. It does move to second reading unanimously. Councilmember Lovell, would you please?
I move for adoption, bill number twenty-three dash one-three-nine, an ordinance approving the fiscal year 2024 Property and Liability Insurance Program, authorizing the city manager to enter into agreements with Travelers Insurance and Chubb Limited for the procurement of property and liability insurance coverage and related services for fiscal year 2024, and appropriating funds and directing the payment therefore, and authorizing the city attorney to approve individual claim expenses and/or settlements in amounts not to exceed twenty-thousand dollars per claim, all as an emergency ordinance pursuant to sections three-point-one-three, F-one, and three of the charter.
Thank you. We have a motion to adopt, bill number twenty-three dash one-three-nine by Councilmember Lovell, seconded by Councilmember Shields. Discussion? Please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. It's adopted unanimously, thank you. Thanks for sticking around for all, for that. Thank you. I think we are on, yeah, proposed ordinances first reading. We've got, Councilmember Demorrow, would you please read bill number twenty-three dash one-four-zero?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to advance to second reading, bill number twenty-three dash one-four-zero, an ordinance approving the redevelopment contract and the lease agreement between the City of Lee Summit and Ellis Glen LLC to implement the Ellis Glen land clearance redevelopment authority redevelopment plan. Glen land clearance redevelopment authority redevelopment plan.
Thank you. We have a motion to move to second reading, Bill number twenty-three dash one-four-zero by Councilmember Demora, seconded by Councilmember Edson. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote, and it passes six-two. Thank you for sticking around as well. All right, we're gonna go to proposed ordinances second reading. Councilmember Hodges, would you please read for adoption, Bill number twenty-three dash one-zero-five?
I move for adoption of Bill number twenty-three dash one-zero-five, an ordinance approving a preliminary development plan on land located at three-six-four-zero Southwest Arbor Ridge Road in District PMX, all in accordance with the provisions of Unified Development Ordinance, Chapter thirty-three of the Code of Ordinances for the city of Lee's Summit, Missouri.
Thank you. A motion to adopt Bill number twenty-three dash one-zero-five by Councilmember Hodges, seconded by Councilmember Demora. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. And it's unanimously adopted. Thank you. Councilmember Shields, would you please read Bill number twenty-three dash one-one-five?
Thank you, Mayor. I move for adoption of Bill number twenty-three dash one-one-five, an ordinance determining and declaring the necessity of acquiring for public use certain right-of-way permanent easements and temporary construction easements for road water, stormwater, and additional pedestrian amenities associated with the proposed third street improvements from Blue Parkway to Jefferson Street Project authorized in city manager and is designated to negotiate for the purposes of acquiring necessary interest in land, and authorized in city attorney and is designated to intitiate condemnation proceedings if such interest in land cannot be acquired by purchase through good faith negotiations.
All right, thank you. We have a motion to adopt Bill number twenty-three dash one-one-five by Councilmember Shields, seconded by Councilmember Edson. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote, and it passes seven-zero with one recusal. All right, next we have Bill number twenty-three dash one-one-seven. Mayor Protim, would you please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I move for adoption of Bill number twenty-three dash one-one-seven, an ordinance approving, approving, adopting, and appropriating the budget for fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four for the fire department for the city, of the He said one-seventeen.
Oh.
We skipped the previous one.
Oh, we did? Councilmember Felker, you're supposed to catch me.
Well, sorry. That was mine.
Can we go ahead and vote on this one?
I'll do it.
Mr. Bushak, vote on this one or go back?
So, was there a second?
I never called the person, I never said the person seconded.
I think you have two options. You can go ahead and accept the second and just...
All right, I'll accept the second. I have a motion to adopt Bill number twenty-three dash one-one-seven by Mayor Protim Lopez, seconded by Councilmember Shields. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. It's adopted eight-zero. Now we'll, thank you all, and then we'll back up a step. Councilmember Felker, would you please read Bill number twenty-three dash one-one-six?
Mayor, I'd like to move for the adoption of Bill number twenty-three dash one-one-six, an ordinance approving, adopting, and appropriating the budget for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-four for the city.
Thank you. We have a motion to adopt Bill number twenty-three dash one-one-six by Councilmember Felker, seconded by Councilmember Edson. Discussion? Yes, Councilmember Felker?
Thank you, Mayor. I know, I mentioned this earlier, but the fund balance, I didn't, I don't feel like we did much justice to just discussing that at length, and I don't have a proposal, but I, but I feel like it's something that we either need to have a conversation at some later date. I mean, citizens, I think, can have, would certainly want to have a say in that. So, I'm just raising the question, seeing what discussions might have been had already, and what staff, what you might have feedback on.
Mr. Dunning?
Mayor, may I?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
No. I was just gonna say that in Finance and Budget Committee, that's gonna be one of our main topics this year, and so we've discussed it, and I think in our next meeting we're gonna start those official discussions and hopefully bring something to council to, to discuss what our policy is gonna be going forward.
Okay. Thank you. She saved you. Yeah? She was ready for you. Okay, we have a motion on the floor, Bill number twenty-three dash one-one-six by Councilmember Felker, seconded by Councilmember Edson. Discussion? Seeing no further discussion, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. And it is adopted unanimously. Thank you. Councilmember Edson, would you please read Bill number twenty-three dash one-one-eight?
Thank you, Mayor. I move for adoption, Bill number twenty-three dash one-one-eight, an ordinance approving, adopting, and appropriating the budget for fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four for the municipal court division of the city.
Thank you. We have a motion to adopt Bill number twenty-three dash one-one-eight by Councilmember Edson, seconded by Councilmember Shields. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. Passes seven-zero with one recusal. Thank you all. And Councilmember Demora, how about Bill number twenty-three dash one-one-nine?
I move for adoption, Bill number twenty-three dash one-one-nine, an ordinance establishing a pay and classification plan for employees of the city who are not represented by a labor organization for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four.
Thank you. We have a motion to adopt Bill number twenty-three dash one-one-nine by Councilmember Demora, seconded by Councilmember Shields. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote, and it's adopted unanimously. Thank you. Councilmember Lovell, would you please read Bill number twenty-three dash one-two-zero?
I move for adoption, Bill number twenty-three dash one-two-zero, an ordinance establishing a pay and classification plan for employees of the city who are represented by a labor organization for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four.
Thank you. We have a motion to adopt Bill number twenty-three dash one-two-zero by Councilmember Lovell, seconded by Councilmember Shields. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote, and it's adopted unanimously. Whoa, we're almost through. Committee reports. We don't meet until July eleventh, I believe, is the next meeting. I'm sure you'll be busy in July, but this month is about two-thirds of the way over. All right, council comments? Councilmember Edson?
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a really quick question for Mr. Dunning. Or, anytime I turn on my cable, because yes, I do still have cable, I'm, there's nothing on the government channel. So, it just has, it just says city of Lee's Summit, and there's never even video playing.
Did you pay your bill?
I don't know.
Nine ninety-nine a month extra to have access.
Okay, so, we have been, what we're doing right now is we're broadcasting live all the meetings. So, this meeting tonight is being broadcast on the channel. We are not programming the channel twenty-four-seven right now, and we hope to not do it in the future because we've done an analysis on the cost and the resources required to do that, and the number of people who do not have cable now. So, we are spending a lot of money and time programming a channel that not a lot of people are watching. Instead, what we're doing is all of our videos are available on demand on our YouTube channel, and we've been streaming every night, all of our meetings have been streamed on YouTube. The quality is excellent, the sound is excellent, it looks very, very good, and we'd like to move towards that. But right now, we're still broadcasting live these meetings.
But what about people who don't have access to Wi-Fi in their home, but they have cable?
Well, they can afford cable, but they don't have Wi-Fi.
No, my mother-in-law has cable, but she doesn't have a computer.
Well, she can, well, does she have a phone?
A landline.
She doesn't have any kind of a phone. Well, I, you know, sometimes there's not much we can do about people that don't have, I mean, there's people that don't have cable as well, so you have to pay for cable. So, you know, we just have to decide what makes most sense for us as a city, and the number of people that are watching on cable that may have other platforms on which they can watch it. They can watch it, streams live on our website, that's available, and then we're streaming up on YouTube. YouTube is free, you don't have to pay for that. You don't have to have a subscription, you know, an account or anything like that. So, a lot of cities are moving towards this, and they're not programming a government channel anymore. Because honestly, I mean, if we, we did, we did, we did an in-depth analysis on how much it costs, and it's, it's a lot, and it's a lot of time also, you know, to get that channel programmed, so.
Well, I wonder, do you know if, did you look at John Knox Village? Because I know before they did their upgrade, their Wi-Fi was terrible over there, and they didn't really have a lot of bandwidth. So, do their residents have cable or Wi-Fi?
I would have to, I have no idea what, I'm...
I guess I'm afraid we're leaving out a demographic because we're going, this is too expensive for us, so we're not gonna serve you anymore.
Well, I mean, I think even when we looked at the budget that was presented, and you saw that, those franchise taxes going down for cable, I mean, people just aren't subscribing to it anymore. So, it makes sense for us to move to these platforms where all the people are. And we do have it available, I mean, if you have a phone, you can watch it on YouTube, you can watch it on our website, if you have a computer, you can watch it on that. But, I mean, it, and quite frankly, you know, we cannot get any stats from the cable companies. I mean, it's just, it's just one of those things that we just have kept doing and doing, and not thinking about whether or not there's a good return on our investment. And frankly, for, for us, it was, it didn't make sense to spend taxpayer money on that time and money to do that when we have all these other platforms that are much cheaper. And actually, us moving to YouTube and streaming live didn't cost us anything. So, I mean, and it looks really good. So, and I will tell you this, since we have not been doing it, we have not, we've probably received two phone calls. So...
Okay, well, I'm gonna work on that.
I'm gonna have everybody call me.
Yeah, I'm, I, because I only watch it on cable, so...
Well, the meetings are still available on cable. So, if somebody is watching a meeting, they can still find it on cable. It's just the other programming that we do where we show the same thing over and over. They just...
Okay, thank you.
All right. What's that? Did my staff, yeah, staff roundtable. Thank you, John.
I don't have anything tonight, Mayor.
Okay. Councilmember Demora, would you please?
Pursuant to section six-one-zero-zero-two-one of the revised statutes of the state of Missouri pertaining to legal actions, cause of action, or litigation involving a public governmental body in any confidential or privileged communication between a public governmental body or its representatives and its attorneys in pursuit to section six-one-zero-zero-two-one of the revised statutes of the state of Missouri pertaining to the leasing, purchase, or sale of real estate by a government, public governmental body where public knowledge of this transaction may adversely affect the legal consideration. Therefore, I move for closed session.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion to move in closed session by Councilmember Demora, seconded by Councilmember Shields. Discussion? Seeing none, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Hodges?
Aye.
Councilmember Demora?
Aye.
Councilmember Pryor is absent. Councilmember Shields?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Lopez?
Aye.
Councilmember Felker?
Aye.
Councilmember Lovell?
Aye.
Councilmember Edson?
No.
Mayor Baird?
Aye.
Yeah, who wants these sticky balls?